All right. The board that we did was about fifty-nine. Give me the name and the number and give me card. Absolutely. I don't. I'm proud. I don't. I'm proud. I think it was. The board is all good. They have the best. I think. 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 Please remain standing, please.
Recently, we lost an officer from the police department. So, please, uh, we'll have a moment of silence after I do the prayer. And please, uh, keep his family in your prayers as well. Heavenly Father, we just come before you saying thank you, Lord. Thank you for another day. Thank you for the strength and wisdom that you give each and every one of us. Thank you for all those that are gathered. We bind any evil spirit that may come against us. We ask that you direct us and guide us all in the name of Jesus Christ we love so much. We ask for these blessings in your son, Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please remain standing for our officer that died. Thank you. You may sit down. Thank you. A public announcement?
Before we get started tonight, a couple of reminders. If you have a cellphone, please turn it off. Um, when we get to the public discussion part of it, I know there's a lot of hot topics to be discussed tonight. Please keep your opinions and your comments with respect to the topic. Please, no personal comments or attacks on the councilman or anybody else, please. Thank you.
Thank you, officer. Uh, just to reemphasize that, uh, address the council with the issues, the concerns relates to Hammond and the community, and no attacking of my colleagues or myself will not be tolerated.
I have a question. What constitution is that?
Roll call vote.
Markovich, here. Pasalic.
Here.
Spitali.
Here.
Calwinski.
Here.
Salinas.
Here.
Poland.
Here.
Opinker.
Here.
Enosup.
Here.
Higgs. Here. Let the record reflect nine presents, zero absence. Next on the agenda is number three, reading of the minutes. Reading of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Pasalic.
I move that we place the minutes on file.
Second. It's been motioned by Councilwoman Pasalic, second by Councilwoman Opinker, that we place the minutes on file. Is there any discussion to the minutes? Any discussion to the minutes? Any discussion to the minutes? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes. Number four is approval of claims. Approval of claims.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Move for approval of claims from May eighteenth through June eighth for council meeting June thirteenth, beginning with claims dated in May twenty-third and ending with claims dated June eighth. Claims number two-three-seven-seven through claims number two-seven-five-five inclusive, ISO move.
Second.
It's been motioned by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilwoman, Councilwoman Poland, that we approve claims dated May eighteen, twenty-eleventh through June eighth, twenty-eleventh for council meeting scheduled June thirteenth, twenty-eleven, starting with claims twenty-three-seventy-seven and ending in claim twenty-seven-fifty-five. Is there any discussion as it relates to the claims? Any discussion as it relates to the claims?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
We have some additional claims to be added. Uh, claim number forty-four-eighty-five to Alvin Cheeks for fifty dollars. June meeting for, um, Human Relations Commission meeting. And then, uh, we have several claims from the police department that we have to assign a claim number, so bear with me. These are perfect. Starting with claim number twenty-seven-fifty-six to Ryan Orr, defensive tactics instruction recertification, two-hundred-and-six dollars and eighty-five cents. tactics recertification, eighty-five dollars and twenty-three cents. Claim number twenty-seven-fifty-eight to Daniel Young, one-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents. Personal, what's the officer survival course? Claim number twenty-seven-fifty-nine to Matthew Jones, three-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents for SWAT conference training. Claim number twenty-seven-sixty, Matthew Jones, one-thousand-seventy-five dollars and twenty-nine cents purchases for pistol match. Claim number twenty-seven-sixty-one to Matthew Jones, seventy-eight dollars and forty-two cents, film processing of range photos for meeting. Claim number twenty-seven-sixty-two, Chris Burdine, fifty-eight dollars and twenty-one cents for SWAT conference. Claim number twenty-seven-sixty-three to Adam Clark, two-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars and eighty cents, SWAT conference. Claim number twenty-seven-sixty-four, Daniel Rodriguez, one-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents, SWAT conference. Claim number twenty-seven-sixty-five, Hilton Garden Inn, three-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars and sixteen cents, hotel reservations for Retzke and Vault for fingerprint school. ISO move.
Second.
It's been motioned by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilwoman Poland, that we amend the claims forty-four-eighty-five for fifty dollars. Claim number fifty-seven-fifty-six for two-oh-six-eighty-five. Claim fifty-seven-fifty-seven for eighty-five dollars. Claim fifty-seven-fifty-eight for one-sixty-six-eighty-nine. Claim fifty-seven-fifty-nine for three-ninety-eight-sixty-seven. Claim number twenty-seven-sixty for one-thousand-twenty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents. Claim number twenty-seven-sixty-one for seventy-eight-forty-two. Claim number seventy, twenty-seven-sixty-two for fifty-eight-twenty-one. Claim number twenty-seven-sixty-three for two-forty-seven-eighty. Claim number twenty-seven-sixty-four for one-twenty-nine-fifty-eight. Claim number twenty-seven-sixty-five, three-fifty-six, total of three-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars and sixteen cents. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Any discussion on the amendment to the claims? Any discussion on amendment to the claim? Roll call on the amendment.
Markovich.
Yes.
Pasalic.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Poland.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes.
Enosup.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes. Motion passes. Nine in favor, zero absent. Now, claims as read.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
I would like to have two claims pulled. Claim number twenty-five-ninety-one, Regional Data Services, one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars for April monthly payment. And claim number twenty-seven-oh-six, Regional Data Services for June monthly payment. ISO move.
Second.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich, claim number twenty-six-ninety-one and twenty-six-oh-six, is that what you said?
Twenty-five-ninety-one, twenty-seven-oh-six.
Twenty-five-ninety-one for one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars?
Correct. Both of them for the same amount.
And that's for regional data?
Services.
Some motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been motioned by Councilwoman Markovich, second by Councilwoman Poland, that we pull claims twenty-five-ninety-one and twenty-six-oh-six. Is there any discussion on the pulling of those two claims?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
I believe this-
Twenty-seven-oh-six, correction.
This is the company that does our reports. And for the last several years, I've been trying to get a list of the reports that they're able to put out for us. And, uh, it says here, ask for contract. I requested a copy of the contract from this company, if this in fact is the company that is doing this. And if it's not, then we can take care of it the next council meeting. But if these are the people that set up the programs here to give us information, several councilmen requested information during the budget hearings to get, um, reports put out. And this individual or this company will not give us, give me any information. So, if this passes not to pay, I would request that they attend the next city council meeting and tell us and bring a copy of their contract and tell us what they can offer us, because a lot of times councilmen like to get information. And all we're being told is it's not set up to do that. Uh, we're paying nineteen-hundred dollars a month, and it doesn't say anything here other than contract, and it doesn't tell us what kind of reports we can get. So, that's the way I'm trying to approach this. Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Calwinski.
Can we have the city controller, Bobby Lundy, to come up and respond to that, please?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Uh, when I talked to Regional Data Services, they said the contract was with the city controller, and, um, they're not able to give me that information. So, be that as it may, I filed the Freedom of Information Act to get the information. Received a letter from, um, the Public Access Consular. To this date, I have not rece, and that letter was dated, I believe, sometime in April. To this date, I have not received any information to my house from the controller's office saying when I can get this information. Um, that's the reason why I'm going this way. I have dealt with the controller in the past, filed the Freedom of Information, and have not received any word from the controller, other than the fact that they were cited. But I did not receive anything from him. As a city councilman and chairman of the Finance Committee, we're requesting, or I was requesting information, did not get it. So, if this is the company that does this, I want a copy of their contract, and I want them to appear and let them tell us what information is available and what we can get. So, nobody sits at a caucus and says, "I don't want to spend the money for it," or "I don't get that report." But here, we're paying over twenty-thousand dollars a year, and I don't even know what we're getting here, other than eighteen-ninety-five a month times twelve. And I cannot even find out from this company what reports are available to this city council. Thank you.
I guess my only question would be in regards to that, and certainly if one of my colleagues want me to step away from here, and I can do that too. But my question would be asked to, are you sure this is the company?
Mr. Chairman, like I stated earlier, we'll find out.
Okay. Motion, it's been motioned, second. Any other discussion? Um, any of my colleagues object to, uh, the controller stepping to the podium? You may do so at this time.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, council members, um, the company that Mr. Markovich has brought up tonight is the company that is responsible for electronically maintaining the entire payroll system for the city of Hammond. If we were to pull their claims for two months and become two months in arrears of payment, we would default on our contract. Um, we would basically end the fiscal function of the city of Hammond. In addition to the payroll functions, this company also manages all of our financial statements, our income statements, our balance sheets, our amortization schedules, our depreciation schedules. The entire fiscal function is electronically managed, maintained, and backed up by this company. Um, and it would, it would be my opinion to strongly encourage any of the council members, prior to pulling their, the, the claims of this company and potentially defaulting on the contract, to please feel free to come to my office or the Board of Works office, who is the signee on all contracts in the city. It's not me personally. I, I can't bind the city into any contract. Um, to get whatever information you guys so choose, I'd be glad to provide it for you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
I would ask the city controller, since he's offering information, to come back to the podium.
Could you please come back to the podium? That would be the appropriate way to approach it.
Recently, in the State Board of Accounts audit, a list was sent out for contracts not being on file. Um, I don't care whether you guys want to pay this claim or not, but that's the only way we're going to get any information, to get a copy of the contract. Uh, I've been asking for this information, been cited by the Freedom of Information Act from the Public Access Consular, and this has gone all the way since last budget hearing. If we're going to be in default to this contract and it's for not playing a claim, I don't believe that's going to happen. Because there, whatever the contract stipulation says, we have to give them notice that we no longer want them, or they're going to go ahead and give us notice. But trying to get information and a listing of reports that this company can put out, that's not asking for too much. If they want to get paid their four-thousand dollars, they can at least give a copy of their contract and come here and tell us what information is available, other than saying, "Well, it's for payroll." Because there's a lot other reports that are available this council has not seen, we don't even know about, or anything else. Be that as it may, you can do whatever you want, but, you know, that's just an idle threat. They're going to keep doing the, the work here. This company also provides, uh, reports for other cities, Gary and other cities here in Lake County. And from my understanding, there are several reports that they put out, and it's all standard package. And I'd like to know what that standard package is and what reports are available to us. Because for, I've been asking for this information for the last two budget sessions and have not received it, and all I'm being told is there is no such report. But yet, in fact, the Public Access Consular says you will provide that information, especially since these reports have been issued and generated in the past. But as a city councilman, I can't get it. A lot of you people are here tonight trying to get information about this conservative district. You can't get it. We're just getting dumped on tonight. And we're going to be asked to go ahead and vote on something where we don't even have information, but I'll address that issue later on.
Yeah. Can we stick to the issue that's on the table?
Thank you.
Any other discussion or any other questions as it relates to this issue to our controller? Okay. Uh, it was a motion and second that we pull claims twenty-five-ninety-one and twenty-seven-oh-six. Is there any other discussion on the pulling of those two claims? Any discussion on those, pulling of those two claims? Roll call vote on pulling those claims.
Markovich.
Yes.
Pasalic.
No.
Spitali.
No.
Calwinski.
No.
Salinas.
No.
Poland.
Yes.
Opinker.
No.
Enosup.
No.
Higgs.
No. Motion fails. Seven nays, two yeses. Back to the original motion, and that is to approve claims as read. Roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Pasalic.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Poland.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes.
Enosup.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes. Motion passes. Nine in favor, zero absent. Next on the agenda is public hearings. We have none tonight. Next is communications. I have a communications from how to apply for labor positions at Amsted Rail in Hammond. The preferred method is to submit a resume is online by one of the following sites, http-dot-slash-slash-assted-dot-h-o-d-e-s-i-q-dot-com-slash-w-w-w-master-dot-com, or www dot vetjobs-dot-com, or www indeed-dot-com. Other communications, there was an editorial in the paper, and I would like to address it in regards to what was stated in the ordinance. The original reasoning for the ordinance is that some of my colleagues and me was being attacked. And I understand that it was political season. However, we do have a responsibility to carry on the business and the work of our great city. In regards to that, the ordinance should have related to the, the way and the professionalism that we are addressed. The issues that you address pertaining to city, I have no problem with. And anyone that's willing to or want to address the council may do so at any time. And as I stated before, in the previous, and now, anytime you're wanting to discuss an issue or anything relating my district, feel free to call my home or my office. But I won't be attacked or abused by anyone. That's the end of that. Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Poland.
Last week, one of my constituents received a letter from the school city of Hammond regarding bus transportation. And I'd like to read this brief letter, uh, to you, and, uh, it was, uh, kind of shocking to me that this came out, considering my district and, uh, what the distance that my children in the fourth district will have to walk now. Dear parent guardian, and this woman, uh, who had given me this letter, she lives on Jackson Avenue and President Streets with, which are in the fourth district. At a special work session on March third, two thousand and eleven, the Board of School Trustees met with the district's Transportation Department staff to discuss various transportation options for students in the Hammond Public Schools. The board held as, as its highest priorities the following issues: student safety, transportation finances, and transportation routing times. At this special session, a variety of mileage options for transporting students were presented. After careful and deliberate consideration of the factors identified above, it was determined that the current one-point-five-mile radius walk zone would be the most efficient and affordable plan. Current levels of funding for transportation and transportation time support this determination. As a result, the Transportation Department cannot include transportation for students who live within this determined walk zone radius. Please be advised that effective at the start of the eleven-twelve year, the students residing at the address listed above will not be provided bus transportation to his or her home, school, based on the walk zone status and other considerations. This early notification is provided so that you may make any necessary revision and plans. Please be advised that the Transportation Department will continue to monitor the transportation issues as they relate to safety and time restraints. In addition, the school city will continue to request the Civil City of Hammond to maintain the sidewalks during times of inclement weather. Thank you for your cooperation. Terry Butler, Director of Transportation and Department. This is completely unacceptable. My student kids in the fourth district will have to cross Columbia and Calumet Avenue and walk all the way to the other end of the fourth district. That is not okay. This one-point-mile radius, this is not accurate. Uh, this is totally unacceptable. It's putting my children in the fourth district at a terrible risk. They have to walk through an extremely dangerous area, and this is not okay. And it's not that easy for a lot of the parents in my district who work all day to have other arrangements to get their kids home. So, I don't know, they need, they could, they say they're considering safety in this. They're not considering safety. So, I'd like a letter to Terry Butler, Director of Transportation, copy Dr. Watkins and the Hammond School Board, that, and I would like it, uh, like to say that, uh, they need to revisit this immediately before the new school year starts. This is not okay. And I do have a petition circulating too with the parents in the fourth district that we will be submitting at a school board meeting. So, thank you.
Uh, that's in the form of, is there a second to the motion? Can I get a second? She wants to send a letter to the Dr. Watkins. I need a second.
Second.
It's been motioned by Councilwoman Poland, second by Councilwoman Salinas, that we send a letter to Dr. Watkins every, as it relates to the issue.
I know.
So, any discussion to the left?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Poland.
This letter is directed to Terry Butler, Director of Transportation Department of School City of Hammond.
Terry, do you want to go to Dr. Watkins as well?
I want a copy to Dr. Watkins and the-
See, see Dr. Watkins.
Hammond School Board.
Any other, uh, discussion? Any other discussion? What are you, what is the content of the letter?
The content of my, the letter is that they need to revisit these board, this border here, because it's putting the kids in the fourth district in a very dangerous situation. They have to cross two major thoroughfares, Cal, Columbia and Calumet Avenue.
Thank you, Councilwoman Poland. I did receive a correspondence. I know Mr. Phil Van Ness from Planning and Development is on sick leave. However, there are a number of lots within my district that really are in desperate need of being cut. The six-thousand block of Columbia, as well as the nine-hundred block of Kenwood and, I mean, not Kenwood, yeah, Kenwood, and also the ten-hundred block of Kenwood. So, I am requesting Mr. Finney or someone of them to hire someone in regards to contracting that out or whatever they need to do to get those lots cut, because, you know, mosquito season is starting, and it's really important that we get those lots cut and cleaned, and we want to keep the community clean and neat. So, I, I, that's in the form of a motion.
Second.
It's been motioned by Councilman Higgs, and second by Councilman Salinas, that we send a letter to the Department of Planning and Development as it relates to cutting the vacant lots in my district. Any discussion on the letter? Any discussion on the letter? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes. Communications, we're under communications.
Mr. President.
Councilman Opinker.
I'd like to have a letter sent to, um, Park Director Pat Moore, senior, uh, in regards to a park on a southeast corner of North Cotton Hundred-seventieth by Jefferson School. There's a big vacant lot there, and there is a park on the school grounds, but after hours, they lock it up, and we got all that empty land. Obviously, it's owned by the school board, but if there's something, you know, the park director could work out with the school board to get, you know, a city Hammond park there would be great for that area.
Second.
It's been motioned by Councilman Opinker, second by Councilman Spitali, that we send a letter to Pat Moore as it relates to Jefferson School and the lot. Am I correct?
Yes, on the southeast corner.
On the southeast corner. Is there any discussion on the letter being sent? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes. Communications. Are there any other communications? Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications is now closed. Next on the agenda is committee reports. Committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Pasalic.
Councils as a whole would like to bring out eleven-dash-eighteen and eleven-dash-nineteen.
Councils as a whole bringing out eleven-eighteen, eleven-nineteen. Is there any other committee reports? Any other committee report?
Mr. President.
Councilman Opinker.
Council as a whole, I'd like to bring out eleven-dash-twenty-one.
Councils as a whole bringing out eleven-twenty-one. Is there any other committee reports? Any other committee reports?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
I think, since we have a lot of people here tonight that are concerned about some ordinance, I think we, when we just give the number, we ought to give the title also so to let everybody know what is coming out and what's planned on being discussed.
It's not a problem with that, Councilman. You want me to read off the, the first one, or you want the clerk to read it? Which one would you prefer?
Doesn't matter to me.
It's to your leisure.
Clerk.
All right. Clerk, go. You get the ball. He wants the title to read off for each ordinance, eleven-eighteen, nineteen, and twenty-two.
Are you on the committee reports, Mr. Chairman, or are you on the third and final?
Just committee reports. He wants to, he wants you to just read the title, I guess. Are you want to- to wait till we go to third and final reading and go through the whole thing? It doesn't make a difference to me. This is, you know, however you guys want to do it, it's fine. You can do it now, or you can do it later.
11-18, an ordinance to amend Hammond City Code, Chapter 36.160 pertaining to the Municipal Cumulative Capital Fund. 11-19, an ordinance to amend Title VII, Chapter 70 of the Hammond Municipal Code, as it pertains to traffic ordinance violations. 11-21, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Hammond, Indiana, joining the filing of a petition for the establishment of the proposed Calumet Burns Conservancy District.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Those are the three titles in which Councilman Markovich requested...
Mr. President.
...they be read. Yes, Councilman Opinker.
I will be amending 11-21 in its entirety, in its place, inserting 11-21A.
Councilman, there's no need to do that at this point. We have still that committee reports. Once we get to the third and final reading, you can do so at that time. Any other committee report? Any other committee report? Any other committee report? Committee reports is now closed. Number eight on the agenda is ordinance is on third reading and final passage. Third reading and final passage.
Ordinance 11-18 sponsored by Councilwoman Pasalic, and ordinance to amend Hammond City Code, Chapter 36.160 pertaining to the Municipal Cumulative Capital Fund.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Pasalic.
I move for third reading and final passage of 11-18.
Second.
It's been motion by Councilwoman Pasalic, second by Councilman Opinker, that we pass 11-18 on the third and reading and final passage. Is there any discussion on 11-18?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Pasalic.
What this ordinance does is it just kind of clarifies how we use the Municipal Cumulative Capital Fund in establishing this non-reverting fund. And it just kind of outlines more specifically how the funds are spent. And this was by request of the State Board of Accounts. So, for instance, I'll just kind of run through this. I'm not going to read the whole thing. But we use these funds for acquisition of land for sidewalks, or maintenance, for acquisition of land for sanitary storm sewers, or to maintain them, as well as acquisition of land for parks and recreation, public safety equipment, retiring bonds, public transportation equipment, computer and network upgrades and maintenance, technological training, and body armor. So it's kind of, just kind of like a housekeeping ordinance, just to be more specific in how we're spending these funds. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to request the control to step to the podium. I have a couple of questions as it relates to this particular ordinance. Mr. Lindy, how does this affect the current, or what is the purpose of replacing this ordinance now?
Thank you, Mr. President. Currently, the City of Hammond developed their ordinance to allow us to spend this money. And basically, in our ordinance, we said, "The City of Hammond hereby ordains that we will comply with Indiana Code." And then we cited the code. And that was the end of our ordinance. Okay? The State Board looked at that creation. They said, "We'd like you to be a little bit more specific because that code lists about 100 things that you can spend cumulative capital development monies on." They said, "We'd like to see you narrow it down to, you know, a dozen or less." And so basically, that's what we've done with this housekeeping ordinance, is been more specific, taking what we currently have in place, what we've, the tax rate that we've currently had for these funds for the last 10, 12 years. And we've gotten more specific with our intentions for using them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other discussion as it relates to 11-18? 11-18.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
I believe I brought this up once before. And under a state statute, looking in the book under which they refer to IC 36-915.52, it says, "Establishment of a Cumulative Capital Development Fund." We've already had this in our budget every year, roughly $300,000 to CCD and the CCF fund. And looking here at this state statute, it says, "The Establishment of a Cumulative Capital Development Fund," and it probably lists another 12 to 15 other IC codes. But the thing that bothers me here, it says, "The Legislative Body of a Municipality May Establish a Cumulative Capital Development Fund Under IC 6-1.1-41." We already have that. And the only thing that scares me here, it says, "To provide money for any purpose of which property taxes may be imposed within the municipality under the authority of all these different things." We've been working this way. We've been going that way. 36-9-16.3, all it does is list here additional permitted purposes for CCIF funds. And, you know, the title of this thing is not even listed right. It's CCF. And the title for this statute that they're referring to is Cumulative Capital Improvement Fund. And it lists acquire property, construct, maintain public sidewalks, and so forth and all of that. We've been doing that in the past. I'm a little bit reluctant to be voting in favor, especially when it says here, "For which property taxes may be imposed." And later on today, we're going to be talking about another tax. So I will be voting no on this.
Any other discussion as it relates to 11-18? 11-18. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call vote on 11-18.
Markovich.
No.
Pasalic.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Poland.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes.
Enosah.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes. Motion passes. Eight in favor and one no vote.
Ordinance 11-19 sponsored by Councilwoman Pasalic, and ordinance to amend Title VII, Chapter 70 of the Hammond Municipal Code, as it pertains to traffic ordinance violations.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Pasalic.
I move for third reading and final passage of 11-19.
Second.
It's been motion by Councilwoman Pasalic, second by Councilman Salinas, that we move for third and final reading, 11-19. Is there any discussion on 11-19?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Pasalic.
What this ordinance does is it gives the judge other avenues besides just fines for traffic violations, such as community service, court education. And it just gives them more opportunity to, instead of just doing fines, which don't always get paid. So it gives them opportunity for, especially, community service. Thank you.
Add me as sponsor of that one. Is there any discussion? Any other discussion as it relates to 11-19? 11-19. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call vote on 11-19.
Markovich.
Yes.
Pasalic.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Poland.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes.
Enosah.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes. Motion passes. Nine in favor, zero absent.
Ordinance 11-21 sponsored by Councilman Opinker, and ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Hammond, Indiana, joining the filing of a petition for the establishment of the proposed Calumet Burns Conservancy District.
Mr. President.
Councilman Opinker.
I will be amending 11-21 in its entirety, in its place, inserting 11-21A.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been motion by, it's been motion by Councilman Opinker, second by Councilman Spitali, that we take out 11-21 and amend in 11-21A. Is there any discussion?
He said it.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Where is 11-21A at? I don't have a copy of it.
You didn't get a copy?
I said a copy on your desk.
Can someone please forward, Councilman? Did he, he seconded it, you know? Is there, is there a second on, first, Councilman, you need to make a motion to 11-21. Then we need a second. Then you need to amend in 11-21A.
I made the motion for 11-21.
But we haven't had a second on 11-21. Okay. It's been motion by Councilman Opinker, second by Councilman Spitali, that we amend in 11-21A. To adopt 11-21A. Adopt. And now the amendment is, you got to make the motion to amend in.
Made the motion to amend it, 11-21.
There's a second.
There's a second?
Okay.
Yeah, second.
It's been second by Councilman Spitali. To amend in 11-21A, Clerk Golick. Okay?
We're right there.
Now everyone clear? So you're referencing off 11-21A. Councilman Markovich, did you get 11-21A?
Yes, it just wasn't titled. Thank you.
Everybody get a copy of the new version of the ordinance? Okay. You have the floor, Councilman, if you would like to continue.
Mr. President.
Sir, you can have a seat at this time. Thank you. Go ahead.
State of Indiana currently has 128 conservancy districts. This isn't something new. Being in the 5th District here, I'm constantly getting called constituents about their flood insurance. This is a step towards eliminating that flood insurance or getting it to an affordable level. I have constituents out there paying $1,200 to $1,800 a year. They're retired people, they're on a fixed budget, and they're constantly calling. Yes, I know this is going to happen overnight, but by passing this tonight, it's going to help these folks out by reducing this. So like I says, that's my stand on it, and hopefully this goes through.
We would appreciate if you turn off all your cell phones. That was stated previously when the meeting started. So I would appreciate if anyone else has these cell phones to turn it off. Thank you. Continue, Councilman.
Done, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other discussion as it relates to 11-21A?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Obviously, this is going to be a hot issue tonight. And that's why a lot of people are here. I know this Councilman has not received any and all the information that's needed to make an intelligent decision representing all of their constituents. It's going to be tough because I know all of you want to talk out there. And when you talk under public expression, you're going to get three minutes, and that's it. And what's going to happen is unless we do some things here tonight to table this, I would like to table it, set up a public hearing for next two weeks, gives Mr. Van Til, Mr. Repay, and anybody else the two weeks to give us this council all the information instead of throwing a couple of pieces of maps on the table here, you know, an hour ago, and expects us to make an intelligent decision on it. And it's not fair to any of all of you sitting out there because you don't even get a chance to look at that information. But don't feel bad because we didn't see it either until about an hour ago. And who can digest it? What is really needed is a study session, any and all information brought to this council in an open forum where all of you are able and notified to attend. I don't know what's going to happen here tonight, but I would like to set up a public hearing two nights, two weeks from tonight, the council meeting, so everybody can get their ducks in a row, get all of their information, give us a copy of the maps, and have a study session, call it prior to the council, not the same night as the council meeting, but during the week. So that we can all probably, we'd have enough people here not meeting some little caucus room, but sit out here where everybody can have their chance to talk about it. Then with the council meeting and a public hearing, before that with the work session, we could probably get all our answers, you know, our questions answered, and get all the answers needed, and give everybody a fair chance. And, you know, at least we're dealing with the transparency. That's my concern. That's probably my feeling, the best way to go. But as you've seen in previous votes, sometimes I'm the only one voting for certain things. So you see how that goes. And if the votes are there tonight, to ram it through, it's going to happen. But I would think the courtesy would be extended to all of you, at least to have and set up a public hearing, to have a work session, to allow you to talk, and let the River Development Commission and the proposed Conservancy District present their case or their information to the council and to all of you in an orderly manner so that we're all operating and looking at the same information.
Mr. President.
I don't think he's completed it.
Uh, oh.
Councilwoman Pasalic.
My district is directly...
I mean, Councilwoman Poland, excuse me.
My district is directly affected by this. Not one of my constituents has been for this. They have called me, emailed me. They are adamantly opposed to this and are very happy with the current commission and what they're doing. This has been politicized, and I'm sorry, this is just would be another redundancy in a service. I resent having this rammed down our throats tonight. We have, we do not have enough information. And if the rest of you have been to any Little Calumet River meetings, I think, I can't remember seeing any of you there. I think you're not really informed. And if you can't think of it that way, think of the terms that you're going to be committing political suicide if you do it. So I think we should definitely table this.
Chairman.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
There's a motion to table. There's no discussion on the motion to table. Roll call vote on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been motion by Councilwoman Pasalic, and second by Councilman, and the host that we tabled.
Mr. Chairman.
There's no discussion on the table.
Yeah, but you named the wrong council person.
Did I say Pasalic again?
You must got her on your mind tonight.
Councilwoman Poland, and Councilman, and the host are second the motion. You can make me laugh, I tell you. Roll call vote on the motion to table.
Markovich.
Yes.
Pasalic.
No.
Spitali.
No.
Calwinski.
No.
Salinas.
No.
Poland.
Yes.
Opinker.
No.
Enosah.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes. Motion fails. Four yeses and five no's. Back to the original motion. Original motion is on the floor. Any discussion as it relates to the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
You know, we've talked in that caucus. And I would make a motion to open a public hearing now for any and all people to speak on this subject with no time limit. Seeing how the courtesy's not being extended of a public hearing two weeks from now, I would make a motion that we have a public hearing now, even though we're not given a notice or anything like that. But in all fairness to everybody here tonight, and let the people speak for once. You know, they had an unauthorized sanctioned poll on the radio today. I mean, and the people that called in there today was unbelievable. Let's just, the last count I heard when I shut it off was 25 to 1. We're not in favor of this. These people have come out here tonight to take the time, to voice their opinion, freedom of speech, and I believe we should hear it. And there's no way that we should be disenfranchising them by putting any type of time limit on it. So I would make a motion, and whether it's going to be a legal or any illegal public hearing, but I would like to hear them speak with no time limit. I so move.
Second.
It's been motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilwoman Poland, that we allow public expression period, a public hearing, as it relates to this issue, this issue alone. Berger, I'm going to ask for your opinion on this, seeing that there was no public notice given. Which direction and which should we go in regards to this issue?
Well, apparently, there's no public hearing required. So it's not technically a public hearing, but the council can permit the public to address the council.
Thank you. Any other... Um, any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Kalwinski.
I believe that if this process moves forward, that, uh, a formal public hearing would be offered at the, uh, time that it goes in front of the Circuit Court.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman, councilwoman Poland.
Out of respect for the number of constituents that are out here tonight, I believe it's our responsibility before you change their lives drastically with the stoppage of all work on the river, that you hear our constituents out, it's the least we could do.
Well, I'm all for that, and I certainly wanna hear anyone's opinion, although it doesn't affect my district as much as it may affect some other particular parts of the city, but I'm certainly open in wanting to hear and, uh, each and everyone's opinion as it relates to the issue, though. It's important that, uh, we get as much information and gather as much information as it relates to this particular issue, so. Any other discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Hinahorso.
As a, as an elected official, I, I think this is a very important issue. Um, not only do I think we should have public expression on this, look, I think that's what we're getting ready to vote, but I, I think we should have public, uh, a public hearing, I think we should be allowed more than three minutes, because this is a very important issue that we're gonna vote on, and we still have not received enough information for these elected officials up here, including myself, to make an accurate decision on a yes or no vote. Um, I am, uh, asking the rest of the council that they, they should change their mind on this and, and, and table it. But, uh, as of right now, we have the motion right now, we, to let everybody speak, this is very important. I'd, I'd be ashamed if, uh, if the public is not allowed to, uh, speak for at least three minutes on, on this issue, uh, without, uh, before we move forward.
Thank you, councilman Hinahorso. Any other discussion as it relates to this?
Was that a motion, uh, Mr. Chairman? Had a motion for three minutes?
We're under discussion. The motion has already been made for, uh, public expression period, to allow the, the residents of Mustard Highland, Wyndire, Cherville, who, wherever they're from, other, should I say, our constituents, allow them to speak to you and me and everyone here, so we can get a clear view as to how they feel about this particular issue. So it's been motion and second. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call vote on the public expression.
Markovich?
Yes.
Pasalic?
No.
Spitali?
Yes.
Spitali?
We already stated, and I'm gonna say this again.
Mr. President, folks, I know it's a hot topic, okay? But please, we have to get this done appropriately. So please keep it in check. If you can't do that, I am going to put you out, all right? I know it's a hot topic, so please act accordingly.
Senator, are you for the First Amendment or against it?
Mr. Kramowski, don't go there, okay?
Mr. Mr. President?
Spitali?
Uh, Mr. President?
Spitali?
Yes.
Kalwinski?
Yes.
Salinas?
Yes.
Poland?
Yes.
Opinkar? Henosov?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. President, would you acknowledge me, please? I'd like to change my vote to yes.
I was gonna do that, but I had to allow the procedure.
Mr. President? May I ask a question?
Please, I don't need, wait a minute, councilwoman.
Okay.
I don't need my colleagues to abruptly interrupt the meeting, I don't need the audience to do it. We need to conduct the meeting and move forward now. Councilwoman Pasalic? I was gonna acknowledge you at the end of the vote. I can't just stop the vote. Clerk Golick is calling off names. Once he completes that, I refer back to you. At that point, you're allowed to change your vote, or to say yea, nay, or whatever you'd like to say at that point. Now, is it, at this point, would you like to change your vote?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay. Let the record reflect, there are, uh, nine yes votes in, 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 as it relates to public expression.
Mr.
Motion passes.
Mr. President, may I ask a question?
You may do so, councilwoman.
I'd like to know specifically what the, um, motion was.
The motion is, is to allow the public to speak as it relates to this conservatory district and, and allow them unlimited minutes as it relates to this issue.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
We need to have a list contained, and, and, and I don't know if everybody that signed the list.
Mr. Chairman?
Interested in this particular topic. Councilman Markovich?
To help you address that, the list they're signing is public expression, uh, people can come one at a time, give their name. You don't have to give your exact address, but I would like to know what district you live in, just say your name and just what hundred block of street you live on, and then what district you live in, and then we can probably keep in that, keep it that way, 'cause the other list is for public expression at the end of the council meeting.
And, and again, even if though, you know, we allow, we, me and my colleagues allowed you to do this, you are, are given an opportunity to speak and address the council, and so the audience, we need for you to just be patient and, and just listen to what's being said and not abruptly speak out loud, because it only disrupts the meeting and doesn't allow us to move forward. That's all we're asking, is for a little respect. We're gonna give you the opportunity to speak and address us, okay? Thank you so much. Now, is there a list? Can we get the list, please? I need the list, the names. Everybody that signed in, I don't know how, if you're wanting to speak at the end of the meeting about something else other than this particular topic, but I'm gonna go down the list and allow each individual to speak. Thank you so much.
Speak, laugh. Don't sign in.
Mr. Golick? Get that cushion there, you can sit on it. Get that cushion.
I love being, uh, stuck into, but that's all right.
Thank you.
That's a list.
I'm gonna have you read all of this, do this thing, no, I'll, I'm gonna read it. Doing it, I should've done it in a communication.
Is this the, is this the last clerk? Are the people that want to speak this issue? So, are we? We probably should have a separate sheet.
I know, I might do that.
What do you think? Should probably should've had a separate sheet for this particular. I don't even know which one to start off with. I don't think all of them wanna speak to the same issue now. I'll start right here. Laura. Okay, Laura, if you could step up, Laura Cruzno, thank you. And, um, give me a couple of seconds before you start. One of my colleagues went to the washroom, so I don't want anyone to accuse them of being absent and not paying attention to what's being said, 'cause a lot of things are misquoted sometimes.
Uh-oh, uh-oh, reinforce them.
So we wanna make sure that everything, all minds and hearts are clear this evening. Give them just a few minutes, okay?
Maybe we should have a five-minute recess so everybody can go to the bathroom. Let it go? I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion. Then that way we can get all the night. Make a motion, five-minute recess.
Yeah. And after, um.
Mr. Chairman?
Joe McCarthy, so if you could move to the front, Joe McCarthy, you move to the front, so you, you, we can have you there, and we, after she speaks, you will be up next, okay?
Mr. Chairman? In lieu of fact that, uh, some of the councilmen left for, um, a recess for a washroom break, I, I would make a motion that we take a five or ten-minute recess so anybody and everybody, including a few of the council persons, can go and do their duty, and then we'll be able to stay here during the whole dissertation for our constituents here.
It's been motion to take a, uh, five-minute recess. Is there any discussion on the motion? It's been motion and second, actually. Motion by councilman Markovich, second by councilman Hinahorso that we take a five-minute recess. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays, motion passes. Five-minute recess.
Don't move.
It's been motioned by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Hina Hosa, that we refer back to the regular order of business. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes. We're under public expression.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Roll call, please.
Roll call vote. Of all members present.
Markovich.
Here.
Pissalic. Vitelli.
Yep.
Calwinski. Salinas.
Here.
Poland.
Here.
Opinker.
Here.
Inahosa.
Here.
Hig.
Here. Seven are present, two are absent. Public expression, ma'am, you may proceed on.
Good evening, my name is Laurie Zalno, I live on Forest Avenue in the 4th District. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I do not believe residents have been given enough information in regards to the creation of the proposed Calumet Burns Conservancy District and therefore are unable to make informed decisions. While I have closely followed all things related to the river, I have only recently discovered that the proposed Conservancy District will have unlimited taxing and bonding authority. This is not a power I think should be granted lightly. I would ask the council to table this resolution until adequate information can be supplied to residents and sufficient time can be allowed for our wishes to be known to you. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Poland.
Would you please tell the rest of the council members to come out here and listen to their constituents? It's really important that they do their job.
Councilwoman, uh, Poland, you know, I would love to do that, and I am the council president, and I enjoy being the president, but however, I can't force anyone to do anything. We are all grown adults and you have a responsibility to respectfully represent.
I understand that they have a responsibility to respect their constituents and be out here for public expression.
I can't force them to come out if they're not out here. I gotta move on. Uh, Mr. McCarthy, please step to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Joe McCarthy, uh, 1st District, Hammond. At first, the Conservancy District, uh, sounded like a great idea, and I perfectly understand local control. I believe in that in my heart. Working at the Sanitary District at the main pumping station during 2008, I witnessed flooding, not on the street firsthand, but as it hit our plant, we were maxed out at 72 million to the plant and another 68 going out to the river, and everything humming and wishing and praying to God that we don't have an equipment failure. There was a lot of water that passed through there. Munster was caught flat-footed, and because of the way the berm was constructed, water overflowed. Our guys warned the Hammond Clinic that they were gonna go underwater to do something, and they were dumbfounded, and they worked on the fly. Hammond activated its street department and anybody else to get out there and bag up our site. And the guys did a great job. As far as how you're impacted, councilman, in every district, because of the amount of money that you spend paying overtime, equipment costs, materials, you are affected in your budget at every district level, and it reduces funding throughout the city eventually. Because if you don't do something, you're always gonna be on standby, and you're always gonna be asked to buy additional pumps. You're gonna always be asked to stay on a waiting list. You're always gonna be asked for people and personnel to stand at the ready. So there is a cost to the whole citizenry in Hammond. Conservancy District sounds like a great idea. I mean, uh, I agree, councilman, uh, I read it too. It isn't unique, it's practiced throughout the whole city. But I, I would say that it probably went through a lot of discussion before one was formed, and a lot of rehearsal as far as what we can and can't do, and a understanding by everybody of what exactly are the tributaries that dump into the Calumet River and the maintenance involved. What I heard, uh, in caucus was, "We have a good idea. We need to pass this, it's only $25. But we're not exactly sure what the amount of money that we're actually gonna need." Uh, I know that there's been personalities involved, and that's a shame. And the raw politics of it is, 10% is all you need in order to go before the Circuit Court in Hammond. Tonight's vote would allow that to proceed to the Circuit Court judge. So if you're passing something to protect the citizens of Hammond, there's always been something in life that I've always concerned myself with, and as a cause and effect equation, and anything you do now, and you leave it to their discretion, it's an open-ended. They can come back and say, "Well, this tributary, this dyke, these pump stations, additional manpower, increased maintenance of, is gonna cost us X amount of dollars, and with inflation, we're gonna have to raise your fees, or raise your property taxes even more." When you have a closed system in place, at least, now the state is gonna say, "We bumped up against a cap, we're gonna need more money." And then that's when our state legislators get involved and say, "Where else can we pull this from?" Instead of taking this from the cities who are increasing taxes in Northlake County that people are having a hard time dealing with now. People, if you read today's paper where taxes were put back in the proper assessment of those people that were flooded out, we're talking about people that were 70 years old, 80 years old, losing their home, and now looking at a bigger tax bill. If you're talking about economic development, that's gonna be a hindrance, because people are gonna look at that and say, "Wow, do I really wanna move into a floodplain on maybe if? Is the county really going to be able to afford..." I'm sorry. Is economic development the place I wanna be in Lake County? Next to a river that might flood in an assessment? We just got through passing the 1, 2, 3 tax cap, but now we're gonna be open-ended to any and all fee increases in order to solve a problem that we, I shouldn't say we, but I am running. But did you do your homework to see exactly what the Calumet River has and what's gonna be needed in order to protect you? Not just this year, but going five years, 10 years, 20 years down the line. So I find this hard to believe, but I, tabling something for more information is a very practical thing to do. Conservancy District is a proper reaction if you want home, uh, control. But the river has no discriminating taste. If it overflows its boundaries, it's gonna affect everybody, one way or the other. And it will impact the city. It's gonna impact Dyer, Munster. I mean, you get flooded and these municipalities can't handle the burden it's gonna take in order to demand the trucks or buy pumps. We're looking at an economic development problem down the road. So putting it, you have, and I know Dan Repay is a, is a great guy, and he's as hard as where it's at, but the politics of it has turned into a personality. I was at a barbecue today, and people were just saying, "Fix the river." I know that's a very generic term, but when you look at people that lost things, and you look at the cause and effect of what you might do today, are you really solving a problem by kicking the can down the road or giving somebody authority? Would you allow somebody to take a piece of your budget? I mean, I agree, we should never let casino money leave the city of Hammond and solve that problem, because it's everybody's problem. An assessment does need to be made. But you need to know what the costs are going to be throughout the watershed area. I think that working at the Sanitary District all those years, and with development projects going on that cover land that is not now absorbing water, but sending water to stations that are putting more water into the Calumet River, is the source problem. So you need to work that backwards, as far as identifying where the water's coming from, and then working it out to say, "What is it that we need to do?" Understand the tributaries, understand the system, understand the finances involved, and ask some practical questions like long-term planning, and see what you really wanna do as far as a Conservancy District or allow the state to run under the control of allocating a $25 fee, uh, right now, and in at least during when the state has control of it. You'll have this time period where the public can involve itself and understand it in its entirety. Passing a Conservancy District is gonna take this out of your hands. Public is gonna have to live with whatever they wanna do, and are we solving the problem? Sorry for repeating myself, gentlemen. I, at first I thought it was a great idea, I'm not so sure now, but I understand politics, and I understand local control, and I understand doing the right thing. I think you need more time to study this thing and take the personalities out of it. As residents told me, just fix the river. Thank you.
I think the next person that's signing is Barbara Kim, and it starts with an H-U-B, I think it is. Is there a Barbara here?
I'm from Atlanta, is it Atlanta?
Uh, 1862 South. Is that you? I can't read your handwriting.
I'm sorry.
Okay, and after her would be Mr. Davison, and then Malia. Is there Malia here? Malia?
Keep going.
Malia, has a field? Maybe she left, okay. Then Carolyn Jackson would be after Davison.
Thank you, thank you, President, and council members. Um, I am from Munster. I thoroughly appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of the council. Um, this is a serious issue for all of us. Um, it is interesting that all of a sudden right now, everybody's getting so involved in it, when for years, I mean, the flood happened in '08, and now we're all concerned about it. Um, I will say I was one of the most skeptical people when Mr. Repay came on. I had a meeting with him very early on, uh, and Mr. McCarron, and I told him at that time, "I don't know you, um, I'm, I'm standing back in judgment." I would say Mr. Repay has done a very good job in managing what he has had time to manage. It's, it's a big, big job, and there's been a lot going on. We, uh, having lost my home in the flood of '08, and it wasn't a personal choice, the government told me my home could not be repaired. Um, that, that was a catastrophe and a devastation of financial, that you will never understand. Um, I'm, I'm probably $200,000 down after that. So, you know, when you're a victim of a flood like that, it's not pretty. We would not want that to happen to our friends on the Hammond side either. I wouldn't wish that on anybody. And this isn't nearly as bad as many things that we see and that happen in the world. Um, as far as, you know, what's going on with this whole Conservancy District, we have a good program in place, we have good people running it. a good program in place, we have good people running it, there are no complaints about anything that they are doing. They had a bill that would have funded them, and it would have spread the burden among many areas and the people in the watershed. So that bill was shot down, and then it went to casino money. We understand that Hammond doesn't want to give up their casino money, but we have paid dearly, and we're not asking you to do that now, but, you know, before you vote on something, please consider all the factors. You're talking about cause and effect. Governor Daniels said, I had to go to him in March of '09 because I was being held hostage by my insurance company. I had no money to move forward with at all. They would not settle for what they should have. And Governor Daniels at that meeting said that we are entitled to all the lousy government in this area of the state that we want to vote in. I don't think we need more government. I think we need to work with what we have, and I think that the commission is the way to go, and they've been doing a wonderful job for us. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Tom Daberton, 1521 Davis in the city of Hammond. Of course, I'm here on behalf of the administration as interim chief of staff. The administration supports this conservancy district for a variety of reasons. First of all, we believe that, from an expedient standpoint, it's the quickest solution to maintenance. And we can talk all night about the maintenance of the river, but let me just share with you a personal story. Back in 1981, as a college student, I worked for the Northwest Indiana Regional Plan Commission and worked for, on the Little Calumet River Initiative. And I believe I was Dan Gardner's first employee, if you will. I was assigned to Dan, and we went out, and we were looking at the river, and at this point, the Army Corps of Engineers was actually designing the plan. It had not, there had not been any ground broken. This is 1981. And we went out to Gary because a gentleman had called us about flooding. We got there, and there were some culverts at Chase Street that were overflowing, basically. They were blocked, and the water was overflowing the street. Maintenance was an issue back in 1981, and maintenance is an issue in 2011. On Friday, we had a close call. We had the river rise, actually, eight feet in six hours, five feet in one hour. Much of that, much of that rise came from, of course, it's not the Little Calumet River itself, it's all the tributaries. It's tributaries like the Katy Ditch and Hart Ditch that feed into the Little Calumet River. Those areas are far south of Hammond, and we're here to talk about Hammond. But for those people that are here from Munster and other communities, when you look at the actual footprint of the basin of where the water comes into Little Calumet River, it goes as far south as Crown Point. We need to have a comprehensive maintenance program. Now, some people this evening seem to be suggesting that this is an either-or. This is not an either-or. The current Little Calumet River Commission is focused and will continue to focus on building and completing the flood control project. The idea of the conservancy district is to provide a funding mechanism for maintenance of the entire area. I showed in the caucus this evening, this is from the federal government, when you look at the hydraulic report from the National Weather Service for the rise of Little Calumet River, it's very interesting that almost at the exact same time that the Little Calumet River rose dramatically, so did Hart Ditch. It was the feed from those tributaries coming into the river that were a problem. Current state, the current state statute for the River Commission, a gentleman read it earlier this evening, President Higgs, you had copies made for all the council members, it states that the River Commission currently is responsible for the river and an area one mile north and one mile south. I don't think Crown Point is one mile away. Crown Point is a lot farther than one mile away. When you look at this map, you see that it engulfs all of Dyer, all of Sherrville, parts of St. John, all of Crown Point, Hobart, New Chicago. There are a number of areas that are involved in the overall river watershed. Those areas, all of those little creeks, all of those little ditches, need to be addressed. Now, we can stand here this evening, and we can talk about what could have been, what should have been, what may have happened, what didn't happen with the state legislature, but one thing is for sure, the state legislature doesn't meet until next January until the, unless the governor calls an emergency session, and I think that's very unlikely for it to happen, at least on the Little Calumet River. The woman that preceded me said the Governor Daniels, she quoted Governor Daniels, Governor Daniels has also said that Northwest Indiana needs to address its own problems. This conservancy district does that. Dr. Rittenmeyer, the former president of Calumet College, said yesterday in a guest commentary in The Times that this was an opportunity for this area to address a problem in its own, in its own right. We need to do that. We're not here, again, we're not here to debate whether the River Commission is doing a good job or not, because they are. They're doing an excellent job on continuing the construction of the Little Calumet River flood control project, and they're to be commended for it. And I have to mention, too, that on Friday morning at 6:00 a.m., when we were, when the crews from the city of Hammond were lined up at Northcott Bridge and at Columbia Avenue Bridge, Dan Repay was out there. He's been very hands-on, he's to be commended for that, but I wouldn't expect less from Dan. I've known Dan for many years. The town of Munster was out there as well. But you know what? One of the biggest problems on Friday, one of the reasons why Northcott Bridge got closed, and Stan Distottini isn't here tonight, but Stan Distottini said, "I can say this," and I think most people in this room would respect Mr. Distottini's reputation as a qualified engineer, "one of the main problems was the fact that there was a 30-inch diameter tree trunk in the river under the, under the bridge at Columbia Avenue. When that trunk was removed, the water began to drop over at Northcott." Does that tell us that there's a need for maintenance? Absolutely. We came close on Friday. We missed having a flood by several feet. We have new flood control structures in place. We have a new berm, a new wall. Those things protect us, but it still required us to close Northcott Bridge and still to discuss the idea of closing Columbia Avenue Bridge. We can't afford to continue to worry about those kinds of incidents. You know, we've got, there's new monitoring equipment, as Mr. Repay said in the caucus in place, which is great. In fact, I can actually, I have an app on my phone, I can pull up the river, it's wonderful. I can pull up the river height. But the bottom line is, is that we need to make sure that we don't get to that point. We need to make sure that we have a maintenance program in place, we have funding available. I want to go back to my experience back in 1981 as a college student. One of the problems that existed then, and one of the problems that existed for many years thereafter, was the issue of funding. There's been a lot of money put in by the state of Indiana as a local match to the federal commitment on flood control, but there hasn't been a lot of money put into for maintenance. What we're suggesting, what we're supporting, is the county surveyors initiative to create a conservancy district to identify funds from all of the communities that feed into the Little Calumet River, to spread that responsibility over a large area, to create representation from all of those communities so that we can finally address maintenance, so that we don't have to worry about snagging logs out of the river the next time it rises Again, as I said before, you know, it's not, this is not a question of who can do a better job, this is a question of trying to address two issues at once. One is the flood control project, and I'm sure when Mr. Ventil is up here, he'll confirm this, that the county and the conservancy district has no desire to take over the construction of the, of the flood control project that's set, it's moving forward through Mr. Repay's group. The idea here is to create an opportunity to avoid a problem. You know, there's always the question of what if? What you need to ask yourselves this evening is, what if we have another significant rainfall? I guess there's one predicted for tomorrow night. What if? What if we have some logs that tie up underneath the bridge, and the water starts pouring down the street very quickly? Sure, we can respond, and we can block that off, but wouldn't it be better not to have those logs there in the first place, and to give everybody the peace of mind and give them the solace of knowing that we're not going to flood their neighborhood because we have a maintenance plan in place, because we're checking to make sure that water isn't being dumped into a creek or a ditch six and seven or 10 miles away that we don't know about, that we're addressing all those issues? That's what the conservancy does, that's why the administration supports it. Thank you.
I have a question for you, Mr. Daberton, and I know it's public expression, but just a quick question.
You're not going to ask me, I'll obey.
No, I just need to know, in regards to the maintenance, you keep saying, I keep hearing maintenance, 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 maintenance of this, maintenance of that. What are you saying, that the current board does not have the necessary fees to maintain?
What we're saying is, is that currently, there is not a long-term maintenance program in place. There is not a long-term mechanism for maintenance. There's not. I mean, again, the basin commission, I'm assuming, either supported or asked for the legislation that appeared this spring, including, as the one woman mentioned, the one proposal for casino gaming. You know, casino, the use of casino gaming from Hammond, Gary, and Lake County is not in the mind of the city of Hammond, is not a fair approach for us to have to pay for maintenance for the entire basin area. So, and, you know, again, we think everybody, everybody should have representation. We think that it's the most expedient way to begin funding maintenance on all of, not just the river itself. Again, the river itself is not the issue. It's the whole entire basin structure, all of those ditches, all of those creeks, all of those little tributaries that lead into that river that cause problems. It's not just the water dumping right in off of, off of River Drive on either side of the river.
And I guess my question would relate back to the attorney now in regards to that. How would that board be structured again? Can you step up to the podium?
Sure. Thank you, Council President. The board would be structured, we're proposing that the board be made up of nine individuals that would serve as a board of directors. Each of them would be elected from a specific directorship area. As I indicated to you, the initial board is appointed by the county commissioners. What would most likely happen in this situation is because of the size of this board, and quite honestly, nine is the largest number that this board of directors can be. Board of directors has to be between three and nine, and it has to be an odd number. We're proposing that this board be as big as possible, so as many people can have an opportunity to be involved in this process. What will initially happen is that, assuming that district is created, the county commissioners will appoint the first board to staggered terms. What will most likely happen is be, after the first year, two of those members will be up for election, and so on and so forth, and then at some point, more than likely, because there's nine, you're going to have three directors that are going to be up for election at that point in time. Those electors, and as I indicated, those directors are elected based upon their directorship area, and they are elected by a majority vote of the freeholders or property owners within the conservancy district boundaries.
May I just, I think you said earlier this evening, there are currently, how many conservancy districts in the state of Indiana?
Somewhere over 100, between 100 and 120.
So, you know, when we talk about, well, this isn't right, because this is, this is something that we really have to consider, and where, you know, that this isn't, this isn't the appropriate measure, that the fact is, is that statewide, we have, there are approximately 120 other conservancy districts.
And my last question, I understand that. Now, my last question, because I want to move on, and there's a lot of people want to speak. That's my last question is, is this an additional tax to those individuals that live in that particular area?
What we're proposing is a user fee, the $20 to $25 a year would be a user fee.
Now, that's what you give me. Why isn't this presented to us, the body, as a user fee versus a maintenance? I'm not getting it, I'm not understanding it.
Well, the user fee would be, would be used to fund the permanent, permanent, I should say, the permanent maintenance of the Little Calumet and the Little Calumet watershed.
So at some point, you can actually raise these fees up?
To the extent that the Circuit Court, and what you have to understand here is, with regards to a conservancy district, it's a creature of the Circuit Court. The Circuit Court, in large part, has to approve almost everything that the conservancy district here does. Here, to the extent that we look to impose user fees, we have to prove that those fees are reasonable, and they're approved by the Circuit Court judge. To the extent, and as I indicated, and I'm sure you're aware, there are user fees, there are taxes. To the extent that we went to impose a tax, which is not what we're proposing at this point in time, we would have to go through the same process that you would, and by that I mean, we would have to go through, we would have to have, we'd have to put together a budget, it would have to be reviewed by the Department of Local Government and Finance and approved by them. We would have to go through the exact same process that you do as part of your budgetary process.
Last comment. In 2008, I spent 20 hours volunteering to help clean up homes along River Drive on the Munster side. A friend of mine lives there, and saw, and saw the damage. Once again...
I saw the damage too.
Yes. Once again, though, I want to point out, that gentleman on Friday morning was standing on the Columbia Avenue Bridge, and the first thing he said to me is, "Do I need to go pack?" All right? We need to make sure that we have a plan in place, that we minimize that type of aggravation, that type of angst, that type of concern for everyone. Hammond has a small section of the city of Hammond that's actually affected in the watershed. Yet this spring, there had been a proposal for us to be one of the three primary sources to pay. We think the maintenance, the maintenance-conservancy district plan makes the most sense at this time, it's the most expedient opportunity to start addressing the maintenance. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
By most people's admission, things seem to be running pretty smoothly with the building of the levees and identifying further needs.
Councilman, is there a cell phone going off? I know that ain't no cell phone.
I know, Eric.
Okay, continue, please.
So by most people's admission, it seems that things are working well on the river at this point in time. The group in charge seems to be identifying areas that need further work, and keeps coming up for me, why are we replacing them at this point in time? So again, I just sort of need to hear, what is the disadvantage of keeping them? What is the advantage of changing? Or is there a, is there a need for a hybrid? I get lost in the shuffle, frankly, and I need, I need further...
Information?
Yeah.
Oh.
Because I get conflicted, because most of the people here seem in support of it.
And don't get me wrong, and I, and I agree with you, Councilman Kowinski, and I tell you, we've got to be on the same page here. It's just like, it's like more information, I like want a little more information, and that's why I was more prompt to table in this than trying to, like, vote on it, because last council meeting, I was not here because I was attending the conference, but however, you know, it went through first and second reading by title. Now we're here, and you're saying, "Vote on it." And I don't have a problem, you know, in a sense, you know, the issue is, you know, versus, the casino, $200,000 out of casino money is not a major issue for me. The major issue is whether or not it's going to be maintaining these people's lives, how they're going to be affected in the long run. That's what's important to me as a councilman. So everybody has their own opinion on how they feel about the particular situation, and some people have may have been addressed by different people as to how they feel about it, but as for me, you know, that's my concern, and I would like, actually, to have a little more time to digest the process, just to digest it and let it sink in and get my full view as to which direction I want to go. Now, you know, by forcing, or I won't say forcing, by allowing the vote to go forward tonight, may put people at an awkward position. Some people may already be where they need to be, and so, and know which way they're going to vote, but as for me as a councilman, I would like a little more time, and it's just a courtesy call, but it's up to my colleagues how they want to address this. You know, they had the opportunity to table it. I don't see a reason for us wanting or having to vote on this particular issue tonight. I think a little more time, it would be feasible, and it would give us an opportunity to, to review the information, to do a little more brain searching of what's going on and what's being presented to us tonight, and it gives me an opportunity, not only that, but to tour and take a close-up view again of the river basin, because I was there when Munster flooded. I was on Northcott Bridge, standing out there where people homes started flooding, and then when the Hammond Clinic, or I guess they call it Munster Clinic, I've always known it as the Hammond Clinic, when it flooded, I'm familiar with that, and it was all underwater, and all these peoples, but the reality of it... When it flooded, I'm familiar with that, and it was all underwater, and all these peoples, but, but the, the reality of it is, when you rode through Munster and seen all those people's houses, and they lost everything, I mean, everything. It is, if, if you have any kind of compassion for people, it's going to affect you. The reality of it is. And I don't know how many of my colleagues actually took a tour of that, but it was, it was a sight to see. These people lost everything, and it's just, you know, I couldn't even imagine trying to start all over and losing my home, my home to some kind of catastrophe as such. So, I mean, just, again, I just feel as though we need a little more time, but, you know, I can't say what's going to happen. All I could do is conduct the meeting and move forward. But that's just my thought. And I, and I, and I was just thinking, in terms of Councilman Kowinski and what he stated, he says, well, you know, I just need more information. Well, reality is, I think all of us could use a little more information, but again, some people may be already where they need to be in regards to voting on this particular topic, and they may not, but I don't know. But anyway, we, we have more people that need to speak, and Carolyn Jackson, you're next, and after that is, I think, Trendy Wasick? Wasick? W-A-S-I-K? Does she leave? And then after that is Larry Rapczak. Can you come a little closer so you can be up next, Larry? All right, thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Jackson. I live on Forest Avenue here in Hammond. I would seriously ask you all to wait, to make sure you get all the information that is needed before rushing to make a decision on this. I know it is a very, very serious issue with a lot of people who have experienced flooding. Trust me, I know, I sustained over $20,000 worth of damage in my house, and I don't even live near the river. It was a result of the sewers backing up. However, those individuals who live in that flooding area, remember, that area has been increased. That was another rush job. Those individuals who live close to the river, not only are they now in a flood zone, but people who live a good ways away, they're also in a flood zone, no, a flood zone area. I'm sure you all remember, after the flood, maybe a year later, it came out in the newspaper. People hadn't even gotten a letter, they had no information. All they knew is, if they looked in the newspaper, they were now in a flood zone. The sad part about it was, the insurance companies rushed to get that information so that they could quickly increase the individual's insurance. And as a result of that, people were getting bills that were outrageous. The end result was either you pay it, or you spend money out of your pocket to have a survey. And at that time, that survey cost somewhere in the neighborhood of $700, I know, because I had to help someone pay for that survey in order to find out exactly what the situation was and how much money they would have to pay. And as it turned out, that survey saved that individual quite a bit of money because the information that was rushed and printed was incorrect. So therefore, they had to spend money out of their own pocket, because the city of Hammond is not going to pay for that survey to be done. You have to pay for that. So, I'm saying that to say, rushing to make a decision on something when you don't know all of the facts and figures, is not a good thing. The other thing is, we're talking about trees blocking up the river. If those trees are removed, and as far as I know of, unless it's a certain kind of tree that grows in Africa, it takes a tree a long time to grow really big. They don't grow really big overnight. Some of those trees, it takes twenty-five, thirty years or more to grow. So if those trees are removed, I don't think we should have a problem with the tree backing up, I mean, falling over into the river causing it to back up. The other issue is, we're talking about maintaining the river as far as in our area, as far as in Indiana's concern, but the river does not stop its state line road. That river goes into Illinois. I have not heard anything being mentioned about what we're going to do as far as talking to our neighbors to getting them to continue with the effort in Illinois so that we won't have a problem. Last time I spoke to Mr. Repay, Illinois was not cooperating. So if there's a situation and that river overflows, or that something happens where the water can't continue to flow through Illinois because it's, it's lower, then what's going to happen to our residents who live in the state line area, state line road area? I think we need to look at a whole lot of more things before we rush to make a decision. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Larry, you're, are you, um-
Trudy Wasick. Trudy Wasick.
Thank you. Larry, you're after Ms. Trudy.
My name is Trudy Wasick, and I'm from Southmore Road neighborhood, I'm in District Four. And the operations and maintenance of the Little Calumet River being omitted from the plans of the Army Corps of Engineers has been known for quite some time. This is nothing new. When the governor restructured the commission, and Dan Repay was put as the Executive Director of the Commission, it was, that was when it was first looked at, that we really need to do something.
Do something in regards to what?
As far as addressing the operations and maintenance, and as well as raising funds to, um, to meet the financial needs, to make sure that this maintenance is done. This is an issue that the Southmore Road residents have been bringing up for over ten years. It's nothing new that those operations and maintenance were omitted by the Army Corps of Engineers. I have heard it said by council members tonight that their district is not along the river, so it doesn't affect you, and it doesn't affect your constituencies. That is not true. As you've heard, the fees and what may become taxes will definitely affect the people in your community. Not only the community of Hammond, but everybody else in the watershed. I heard it said tonight, too, that we're looking for a quick, um, resolution to this issue, and that the Conservancy District is the quickest resolution to this. Quick does not mean the best. You know that from dealing with your own children. The quick answer is not necessarily the best. You need to listen, and as you have said, several of you have now said, I need more information. I would ask you as council members to revisit the vote on if this should be tabled tonight, and that there be a meeting again in two weeks for an open forum, and that you would once again have a meeting prior to that to really take a look, and then bring it to a vote. I do not believe that you have all the information, especially if some of that information was redone in the last two weeks, and some of your own council members did not have it, as you walked into this meeting tonight, or you learned it in the caucus. I live right on the river. I was blessed not to have flooded, and it was at the expense, I believe, of the people of Munster who did flood.
You didn't flood in '08?
I did not flood in '08. Our community did not flood. The flood zone will not be taken out, the people in Hammond or anywhere else will not be taken out of the flood zone because there is a Conservancy District. I would like to make that clear.
Say that one more time.
The people in the flood zone area will not be taken out of the flood zone because there is a Conservancy District. The Conservancy District, from what I understand, will address operations and maintenance. The river, the flood zone people may be removed from the flood zone when FEMA chooses to remove them from the flood zone, and that will only be done when the river project is completed and all papers are filed by the Army Corps of Engineers. This is not a local issue only, this is a federal issue. The surveys that were previously, um, mentioned did not take people out of the flood zone. They gave people a different rating within the flood zone. You could be rated as an A, B, C, or D, and depending on your rating is what your premium of flood insurance would be. You would have the choice to be, not have to pay flood insurance if you so choose. If you so chose, then you did not have flood insurance. You are still in the flood zone. You will remain in the flood zone until FEMA chooses to remove you. I want the, the council to understand these issues, because they do play into what I'm hearing people say tonight. Again, the Conservancy District will not affect anybody being removed from the flood zone. It is an operations and maintenance Conservancy District only, and it will open us up to new taxes on an ongoing escalating basis over the course of years, and please, take a look at this in the long term, not the quick fix. Thank you.
She made a lot of sense.
Larry, you're next. And after Larry, there will be Rick Rodrick- and then Leon Camino.
Hi, Larry Rapczak, from the First District, 2500 Block of Birch. I'll speed along, it's already 10:15, and I think it's very obvious to everyone now who's here, the desperate need there is for a public hearing, an in-depth public hearing on this issue. When Mr. Davertin was up here, he had a lot of information. The council asked for more information that you haven't been provided. It's pretty obvious that this very, very crucial issue needs to be examined in some more detail. We need to hear both sides of the issues, and we need to educate ourselves, and we need to allow the public to become educated in this. I think that's absolutely obvious. I think the motion to, to deny the tabling of the bill was absolutely the wrong one. You rejected the most sane, common sense, reasonable way to look at this very crucial issue. There is absolutely no doubt, from everything that we've heard, from the people who are here, and from Mr. Davertin and his experience and whatnot, there's no doubt that maintenance and future oversight of the, the river basin is absolutely critical. And we all feel for the people in that district who are, who have lost everything, and who are afraid that it's going to happen again. There's no doubt about the necessity to deal with it very, very thoroughly, and in the best way possible. The most expedient way possible, though, I'm not sure. What we really get down to, what I, what we need to do, everyone, is to step back and look at what the entire issue involves in terms of its political ramifications. It is loaded with them, as in who will control the decision-making process from here on in if the Conservancy District is passed. I was intrigued by Mark Kiesling's recent column last week, where he assured us that this new nine-member district will be made up of elected officials, so why should we worry if they turn out to be, right? If they turn out to be corrupt in any way, we can just vote them out. That's what Mark told us. So there you have it, a Lake County Council that will essentially be immune to political pressures. That's what Mark says will happen. And I thought to myself, what other nine-member elected council is there that we could turn to for comparison before we take the plunge and create a new one? And I thought perhaps I should consider, we should consider the nine-member council that I'm now standing in front of. How would the new Conservancy District function anything like the Hammond City Council does? Well, we just saw what happened. You just, five members on this council rejected right down the line the most sane, sensible option to ram this thing through tonight. And then when there was a talk, then there was a vote taken to allow us to come up and express ourselves before the vote is taken, it looked like it was going to go down, too, but fortunately, thank you for changing that and allowing us to have a chance to speak. At any rate, there is political pressure, and there always will be political pressure. This Conservancy District would represent a tremendous consolidation of power, realizes, between the city of Hammond and the Lake County Democratic Party. And the establishment of this new district would establish a new countywide council with the ability to levy new taxes on us, and this represents, as I say, a major new consolidation and source of, of power between Lake County and the city of Hammond, with no downstate Republican checks and balances at all. All of those will be eliminated with the current River Basin Commission. And I'm already grabbing for my wallet. I don't mean to open it, I mean to protect it. And I, I would like to ask the people who are watching at home, and are we all comfortable with that? Are we all comfortable with the massive power grab that this represents? Also, as everyone knows, our casino revenue situation is going to change in the future. Illinois is certainly going to expand its number of casinos, and Mayor McDermott, who is a very solid strategic thinker and planner, I admire him for this, I told him that, he realizes that we will be needing additional sources of revenue once the casino cash starts to dry up, dry up. Will we cut spending? I don't think so. I don't think so. No. We will keep spending by raising taxes. And so if this Conservancy District goes through, we will have essentially handed to the Democratic Party of Lake County the authority, a brand-new means of raising our taxes to make up whatever shortfall might occur in the future. And considering how creative and imaginative this administration is with its bookkeeping and accounting practices, and all you have to do is sit through one of these meetings to realize that, um, we may end up being taxed in any way possible, or charged a nominal fee to cover whatever the party might want. So, I wish to make a formal request of this council, and that is that you reconsider your vote to table this issue tonight, or to simply not vote on it. I think that we need to postpone it, and, and, and I ask that at least one of the five council members here respectfully ask that one of you change your vote on this, so that we may table this issue and have, and take the sane and reasonable way and allow us, your constituents, to really educate ourselves and hear about it, and give you our feedback before you do a final vote. I turn to my councilman, Councilman Kowinski, and ask if you would be the one to change your vote and not vote on this tonight, and allow us to have our chance to let our voices be heard across the entire area. Thank you.
It is always a pleasure to hear you speak before the council. I tell you, you are on top of things.
I see, thank, I, I appreciate. I, I respect the council, and I respect the ability that you offer to allow.
So professional, and just, it's a pleasure to just listen to you.
It's all written out. I rehearsed it. Thank you.
Next speaker. And after Leon is Kalata Blake King, and then Mike Erkeline, and Jim Promeski.
Rick Falbrick, Highland, Indiana. Highland takes no backseat to flooding, and homes that are damaged and whatnot. I've heard these, these stories, and I, I have great sympathy for all the folks that have suffered these damages, and your friends and your neighbors. And I, and Hammond has, has been affected by these things over and over again. I have the deepest appreciation, but Highland takes a backseat to nobody. My mother lives in Hasfield, Indiana. She's been flooded so many times, I can't count it. So it's like, I, I come to the table with, with appreciation for all these considerations, and I, and I, I understand. There is a fundamental difference between the Little Calumet River Basin Development Commission, which is headed up by Mr. Repay, and the proposed Calumet Burns Conservancy District, which is being proposed, not headed by, being proposed by Mr. Van Til. The governor appoints the five present members, there's only four, but there's, there should be five, members of the LCRBDC, that's a mouthful, they are all Republicans. I don't know if that's by design, if the governor is Republican, I understand that. I am a Republican. I don't think the Republicans have any, you know, control over, having knowledge over a subject matter. And, and why there aren't a few Democrats, I have no idea, but I, I make this as an observation. The proposed CBCD, nice and short, Mr. Van Til's proposal, will have nine members who will be elected from the nine districts in the Little Calumet River Basin District. That's been, it could have been three, it could have been five, it could have been seven, it could have been nine, it's been put forth as a nine. That could be changed, as I understand the rules that are at play. So whether it's, whatever the number is, three to nine, I think nine's a good choice. Mr. Rittenmeyer, I don't think, would in any shape, manner, or form, could be accused by any of us as being a political animal. Mr. Rittenmeyer wrote an editorial, I have it in my hand, I will spare you the reading of the entire document. But he makes a few observations. I feel it's very important that I read verbatim some of the- of the sentences, so please bear with me. The answer, he's talking about the problem of flooding. The answer to these vexing, damaging, economy-killing problems is within our grasp, is an established governmental construct that has been used successfully across the United States, including North West Indiana throughout the state of Indiana. It is a conservancy district. The creation of a conservancy district is the right solution, these are not my words, these are the words of Mr. Rittenmeyer, these are not my words. District is the right solution, is a regional solution to a regional problem. We can do this ourselves and without help from anyone else. How long are we going to be at the mercy of downstate, whoever it is, Republicans or Democrats? We have in our power, in our authority to do something on our own. We are accused constantly, we can't do anything on our own. Somebody has to constantly come to us and pat us on the head and tell us, and wag their finger at us, that we can't do this and we can't do that. How come we aren't doing this? How come we aren't doing that? Now, we have an opportunity, and I'm not promoting either side or I'm not for any one of these, the two groups that are being, that are in operation. One is in operation, one is being proposed. But this, and this idea, I've heard this said over and over again, you know, pardon me for naming him, Mr. Van Til, he's the bad guy here again, I guess, but let me just say that I don't make him out to be the bad guy. That in fact, it's been in, here's a newspaper article, this is dated February 12, this is months ago, February 12, 2011, John Seidel, this is the Gary Post Tribune, Soliday's House, this is midstream of the entire article, Soliday's House Bill 1574 would, most years, create a fee of $25 for owners of residential land in Little Calumet River watershed west of I-65. Notice what I said, west of I-65. The Little Calumet River flows to the east of I-65. Don't we all know that? We know our geography in some fashion? How can it be only pertaining to what's west of I-65? Let me continue. $50 for agricultural, $100 for commercial, $200 for industrial. Before 2012, that includes 2011, we can do our math, right? The fees would be twice that to create the $1 million emergency fund. So in other words, 25 is not 25, 25 is 50, that's, you're a homeowner. If it's 50 for agriculture, it's going to be 100. 100 is going to be 200. You get, you get the idea where I'm trying to take this thing. Nobody accused Mrs. Soliday or downstate of saying, well, they're going to make the 25 become a 50. No, it's going to be a thousand. We have to trust, I know this is going to, this is going to be a mocking remark, I guess, and I will be laughed at as I say these remarks. Yes, let me say this, we don't trust any of our politicians. And yet when we get the chance to vote them out, who do we go? We vote for some of the same people we voted before and we vote them in again, we vote them in again, we vote them in again. Now, in the past legislature, we just voted in a whole bunch of Republicans. Now, we went from a House vote that was 52-48, and don't hold me to the math right now, but it's something like that, it went to a 60-40 majority for the Republicans. We went from a 33 to 17 majority for the Republicans and we went to 37 to 13. And we in Lake County then celebrated when our Democratic friends that are our representatives went to Illinois and housed out there for three or four weeks and we applauded them. They did the right thing. At some point, our politicians are being elected. We don't like them, we're going to vote them out of office. These folks are sitting right here and I cannot tell you how much I appreciate being given this chance to speak before you. I'm not even a resident of Hammond, I'm a resident of Highland, Indiana, I did grow up in Hammond, I went to Morton High School, I went to the Hammond schools. So I am familiar with this area. And being given this chance is deeply appreciated, all of us appreciate this opportunity. But at some point, we throw our stones, we throw our mud, we laugh, we mock at all of our politicians. You don't like them, get them out, vote them out. But when people are put in office, we trust the governor, right? Republican governor. How many folks here are Republicans? How many Democrats? Don't even bother. What I'm saying is, we have to trust people. He was voted in twice. That makes him an evil person, I guess, I don't know. But he appoints five people to this commission, we trust the commission, do we not? We trust the commission, they're the good guys. But Mr. Van Til comes to the table, he's a Democrat, he's a bad guy. I'm in the city of Hammond. How many of you folks on the council here are Democrats? Eight of you, one Republican. Is she evil? Are you good? Are you evil? You follow me? At a certain point, you've been elected. People don't like the job you're doing and let's vote you out of office, but let's at least give you the benefit of the doubt of doing the right thing, meaning what is best for our residents, meaning what is best for the people of Hammond, what is best for the Little Calumet River Basin Commission. And it's like, and if you wish to put it off as appears to be the case, fine, that'll be the case. But I think if you, if you vote on it, you're going to say, I'm lacking information. I will guarantee you, in two weeks, you will still be lacking information. At a certain point, we are all going to be lacking information. None of us knows everything we need to know. And if I knew everything I needed to know, what about the unexpected, right? How many times in Highland did we hear this? We hear this over and over again. This was the 100-year flood. And then we had the 500-year flood. And it came twice in 18 months and I thought to myself, we had all this grand knowledge. We are fooling ourselves. We are coming to the table with the information we have available. If you're going to postpone it, that's great. But in two weeks, you're still going to be short all the information for some people because some people are going to use this as their excuse, I'm short information. You're still going to be short information. God alone knows everything and can predict what's about to happen. And I really appreciate having this chance to talk. Thanks.
Sir, before you leave, I just have one question for you. So how do you feel about it? I mean...
I think it would be unfair for me to state a position, except to say that the fees do not bother me.
No, I mean honestly, honestly.
Let me say this, the fees don't bother me. What I would like to, what I would prefer is local control. One can argue that people are, choices are given to the governor and then he chooses among the choices. Did you have a chance to vote for the person you'd like? Is that as important? Is that unimportant? To me, it's important.
That's important to me.
To me, it's important. I would like to have the chance to vote. So are there weaknesses, strengths in either proposal? Yes. But at the end of the day, if I get a chance to vote for my representative, I would rather take the conservancy district.
So that's why it's so good to allow people to speak, so you get a chance to hear the balances and...
Mr. Higgs, thank you.
Thank you.
Leon Camino, First District, 1500 Block, Lake Avenue, Hammond. I think the last speaker pretty much stole some of my thunder. Well, just like he said, if you go another month, two months, three months, four years, you probably won't have every aspect of this figured out. But any information's better than no information. They're asking you guys to go cold on this tonight, that, to me, that's, I don't understand the logic. You know, it's like, it's being 60 years old, the one thing I've learned in life is any time somebody's trying to get you to close a deal, the very first night you look at something, you better watch out because it's probably not going to work out in your favor. I don't see what the big problem is. I know Mr. Davertin's come up here and he's related some of the direct consequences that could happen if this, if a system isn't worked out for maintenance of this, of this project, that's understandable. Everybody knows what's happened in the past. But the thing, the point in fact is, we're not talking months, we're not talking years, we're talking weeks. And I think that, that the least that we could do is step back, take a look at this, let, let, let all the, all the fervor die down here and just, just take a good calculated look at this and see what we've got. I think that the representatives here need to know exactly what they're looking at. And I think that the citizens of Hammond ought to be able to have a good handle on what we're looking at in return. I mean, are there other ways to do this? I don't know. I mean, this riverboat here supposedly, the idea of this riverboat here was to use the revenues garnered from that boat for civic improvement. And to me, this is a classic case of something that should be, have these, the funds that this boat generates used for, to offset the user fees for the people that live in the city of Hammond. I mean, I don't know, maybe that's a good idea, maybe not, but is it better than the clubhouse at the golf course? I don't know. But this is something that needs to be worked out over a period of time. You know, this thing's been building for 30 years now. This just didn't crop up like a mushroom overnight or anything. I think that, that, that there should be some time taken so that people understand the consequences five, 10, 15 years down the line for not only the citizens of Hammond, but now you're talking Highland, you're talking Griffith, you're talking Munster, you're talking Porter County. I think we need to take a look at what we're getting involved with here. You know, this, this isn't just a typical Hammond ordinance. This has ramifications that are going to be over the whole Calumet area here. And I think for that reason, or that reason alone, I think that we need to take at least another week or two just to see what we've got here. Hopefully, the citizens would, could be brought up to speed the same way the council members can, so we all, we all have an idea of what we're looking at here. I think that's all we're really asking for. Whether or not this is the best idea or it's not the best idea, I don't know myself. I don't know enough about this to tell one way or the other, and I, and I know you all don't either. So what's the rush? I mean, this has been going on for 30 years, is another two weeks going to hurt? Yeah, that's all.
Thank you. Kalata Blake King. And Mike, Mike, you're after her.
No. Did I call you? I didn't say Jim Promeski, I said Kalata Blake King.
Okay.
Who's that? Laura. And then after Kalata is Mike. Jim, you're coming up, so you're after, you're after Mike.
Good evening, councilmen, councilpersons. I am so glad that I stayed during this meeting to hear all of the comments, a lot of which I wasn't aware of, and now that I am. I'm hoping, but I'm sure someone is taking note. At some point, you will gather all of this great information you've heard because, such as this young lady back here, she indicated, if I heard her correctly, if we do the, go the conservatory route, it would be a maintenance only and, you know, the taxes could be endless. And if that is indeed true, that needs to come out if we do have a public hearing. I mean, that's crucial information. I mean, we're hearing two different sides. And then to hear that the administration is for this, it sort of pains me because we've been talking about this for years and the current situation in order to resolve it seemingly was the best situation. And, and now we're hearing, as everyone has said, it's been going on for several years, and why rush to judgment? And it really sounds to me like this unigov that folks have been talking about for so long in this area. It's a power grab, as someone has always mentioned. So certainly, I don't believe this councilman, council group, Hammond County Council, we want to be part of saying okay to something that will eventually become unigov. And if this is something that we want, that we have one body eventually making all the decisions, and I don't think we need that because it takes away your power and all those layers will be gone. I think we need layers of government to be a watchdog for everybody. So let's, you know, consider that unigov, everybody's been buzzing about that for a long time, and we need to be careful that we don't get caught up into that trap. People are power hungry in this area. And to be in a position to be over this entire county or region and running the show, and this is exactly what it sounds like to me. So I'm grateful that I stayed and I'm also grateful that I heard that this affects all of Hammond, not just certain districts. And I live in the third district, so certainly I'm concerned because I could be charged taxes and, you know, water flows northeast, southwest. So I'm grateful that folks pointed out that this affects all of us and all the district councilmen should be concerned. Thank you so very much.
Mr. Van Til, it's okay. Thank you. Mike, you're next. And after that, Jim, you're next. Uh, and after Jim, it will be Craig Henwin.
Allison.
Hansen. Mr. Hansen, you'll be after, Mr. Promeski.
My name is Conservation Mike Extriling, and everybody knows I'm a, I'm a huge advocate for the river, but for the river itself. Statewide, we, we keep hearing how many other conservancy districts there are, but I want to, I would like to know how many others encompass 13 communities in two different counties? Because most of the conservancy districts that I've ever heard of are one little piece of one community. I don't know if that makes any difference or not, but other commissions that we have in the state, on the Cankey River, on the Ohio River, on the Walbash, and on the St. Joe, all cover state waters, which means if it's a state water, that means it belongs to all of us. That water is ours, the fish in that water is ours. Same with Lake Michigan, the Indiana portion of Lake Michigan belongs to all of us. Little Calumet River is a state water. Seems that it should be run by a commission and not by a conservancy district. This is not some little farm pond or mill pond that we're dealing with. This is an actual, this is a state waterway. My only big problem with the conservancy district is what I've been hearing about how the people need representation. And if everybody's concerned about the people in their district, who's watching out for the river? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep going. Wow. Fucking goddamn bosses.
Next gentleman.
Thank you. Jim Promeski, 6400 Block of Lane. I'd almost be tempted to take a pass on speaking, but I'll adhere to my three minutes. Most of the points that I have wanted to make have already been made, some of them quite eloquently. This isn't about engineering or operations, it's not about somebody falling asleep at the switch at the sanitary district. It's not about the operation of the Little Calumet River at all. It's about control, it's about power, and it's about another level of taxing authority. And that is my real concern. You know how hard I've worked to try to bring taxes under control in Indiana? And obviously, I'm going to always argue against anything that would be, would circumvent the efforts that we've made so far. We've heard comparisons of how many conservancy districts there are in Indiana. And there are a lot, but nobody has mentioned the fact that within the statutes for conservancy districts are included the ability to have a conservancy district for parks or the conservancy to have other utilities. Those are all conservancy districts and they're all within the 200 and some that are numbered here. So how many are actually sewer conservancy districts? I don't know. But what I do know is that we have two of them over in Maryville, and both of them have had problems, and the problems have been political in nature. I don't want to name names. But the judge that's going to be ruling on this is actually an officer of one of those conservancy districts. So don't you think it would be appropriate that he should recuse himself from that decision? Yet we've heard nothing along those lines at this point in time. We've, I have been involved in discussing the issue of regional sewer districts almost as long as I've been involved in trying to bring tax reform to Hammond and to Lake County. And in a meeting less than a year ago with County Attorney John Doll, I was trying to convince him that he and the commissioners should be promoting a conservancy district instead of a regional sewer district because a regional sewer district doesn't give the citizens an opportunity to participate in the decision-making. So here's a situation where I'm talking in favor of considering a conservancy district, offer the people a conservancy district for sewer systems that are in South County. And when I backed him into a corner, he didn't have a proper answer for me, he just said, I don't have any more time for you, Jim, get out of my office. And the interesting thing about it is, he then went back to shining his shoes on county A conservancy has advantages over a regional sewer district. And a regional sewer district, in some instances, is appropriate. The question is always to make the right decision. Once again, it's an issue of another layer of government, another opportunity to charge the citizens taxes. And what I want to, I'm going to close with this because I think this is kind of significant. And that is that if you bring this to bear and, as illegitimate as it may seem that a judge could rule based on the input of just Hammond, if we were to get a conservancy district and things were to go awry and we had additional flooding in the Calumet River, you would be accountable for your decision. Why would you want to do that? Why would you want to expose the city of Hammond? Why would you want to expose your own political careers when you don't have to? I mean, there are other ways that this can take place, and a referendum is the way it should take place. It's, it's not about operation, as I started out by saying, it's about control and it's about the financing of the thing. And as has been brought up a few times earlier today, why would we have any reason at all to want to trust the kind of government we have in this county? Time and time again, we've... Time and time again, we've been failed. I think you really should think it over from the standpoint of what you're doing. Let's think regionally, and let's not think about what Mayor McDermott wants you to do. Think about what the citizens in Munster and Highland and Griffith, even Gary, what has happened to them in the past, and whether you want to be involved in a decision that if it goes awry, you're accountable for. Thank you.
If what awry?
Feels good to get up and stretch. Craig Hanison, I'm a Munster resident. I'm the president of the Wicker Park Neighborhood Association. That runs from Ridge Road north to the river, from Hawthorne just east-west of Wicker to Oakwood Drive. Going to all these meetings since the flooding has educated us all. And I think one thing out of this, everybody has an opinion, everyone that's been affected has some frame of mind of where they've come from. It is a very important issue, and I'm glad, I'm a big listener. And I believe part of being a good listener, and this is nothing new, is being able to listen and to base and form your educated decision based on everybody who is involved in this. And so I will tell you, Mark, from my viewpoint, with these rain events, I'm very concerned with this, you know, these extreme weather conditions and all these rain events, and they seem to be bigger than usual. And as a repercussion of this, I see the River Basin Commission as doing a very good job in coming to the aid. I know with this last storm, as Tom Daverton had alluded, Dan Repay was there very early morning, he was right on it. It's comforting to know for all the residents on both sides of the river when we're getting all the water coming from Hart Ditch and other tributaries that affect us, is somebody's going to be there to monitor the level and make sure that if there's a closing need, that's going to be, need to be made, that it's taken care of. Nobody wants to go through that again. We do have the answers for the test. And one of the issues, perhaps if Mr. Van Teel or one of his staff possibly speaks later, the thing that we're curious about with a conservancy district is the representation for the nine districts. How will it be divided? And so we like to be further educated to make sure that all the, you know, all the districts, the communities, municipalities have fair representation. The other concern I have of myself, knowing with the commission, and we go to their meetings on a monthly basis, and it's very easy to talk with them, the five or four commissioners now, and the executive director, well, the commissioners are paid fifty dollars for a meeting. The executive director has his salary, there's very low overhead, and they're, you know, accountable. They don't have to worry. I'm just worried with a commission, or not a commission, the conservancy district with nine appointees, it's like a nine-headed monster. So in talking to one of my members today, they expressed to me, "You know, Craig, I'm worried that the people in St. John, we know, you know, from getting educated, that their water is coming from Hart Ditch. You know, Craig, are they going to have a concern for us because the water's coming directly, you know, affecting us directly where maybe they have issues with Illinois coming over? But are they going to care? Is that representative going to be as caring for our needs and if we're flooding? Or just the bottom line, the water comes all, you know, unfortunately, you know, to these pressure points? So that's, the representation is a critical component. And also, the transparency with the Little Cal River Basin Development Commission, we have accounting statements, they have to answer and submit their bills through the state, the government, and to get payment. And they're dwindling down on their funds that have been approved. So we're concerned also about the transparency as far as spending with the commission or the conservancy district. Who would they be accountable for? Would they have, would we have clear access to see how they're spending the money? And so, and it's just, you know, proving a point with all these storms, you know, it's just very comfortable, as I said, that the commission is right there, hands-on, and we need that. And I think the thing that I've learned so much is keeping this levy system clear with the obstructions that have been raised tonight. If you go to Hart Ditch, I talked to another member from Munster, and he said, "You know, Craig, with all the development in South County, not only is the water at a higher level in the Hart Ditch, traveling from south to north, but the volume, it's very forceful. And we had that ninety-foot tree or whatever, you know, a big tree, and they still have to get the root ball out of there." So it's not a new norm. This is a, the operation and maintenance is an everyday, ongoing. From this day forward, we can't do anything about the past, but we sure can affect the future. That's why this is very critical, all of you, because it affects all of us. Thank you.
Next speaker. Was that Craig? Were you Craig?
Craig, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I stepped out. James Osborne Junior and George Van Teel, then Ruth Morse. James Osborne, then Van Teel. James, are you here? Come on up. It's your turn to speak, sir. And then George Van Teel is after him, and then Ruth is after George. Okay?
Mr. President, members of the council, thank you for opening this up for discussion for the people to speak their minds. Anytime that the council decides to push something through without letting the people speak their minds, when it's going to certainly devastate a lot of people, I think that's being very unfair to them. So thank you for allowing people to come before you and speak at this time. Also, I'd like to ask that you consider tabling this issue. I just found out about myself late this evening, and as well as a lot of other people before me have spoken, I think there's a lot of things that still need to be known or addressed before it's passed. So I ask you as a council to consider the consequences of your vote tonight when you get ready to vote on this, and ask that you table this issue. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, members of the council, I'm going to try to respond to a lot of issues that have been brought up and try to clarify some things. But I do want to make a couple of personal observations in the beginning. Someone, every so often, someone says, "Where was George during this flood or that flood?" Actually, one of the key parts of my job is six hundred miles of county-regulated drain that go into the, towards the Kankakee River, and some goes towards the Calumet River. And of course, there's a lot more drains that go other than the ones. It's kind of an archaic system with regulated drains. So most times when you see the rainfall, I'm out somewhere that you don't know about, and you'll never read in the paper about, "Last night it didn't flood" for some creek or river along the way, Turkey Creek or Beaver Dam Ditch or the Johnson Ditch or whatever. But we've been working on that steadily for years and years. And it all contributes. Someone brought up earlier tonight, says, "Well, Hammond pays, Hammond doesn't have any regulated drains, but they pay towards maintaining regulated drains." Well, and of course, of course. Anytime we do goods, we're able to do good things relative to drains that come towards the Calumet River, that positively affects everybody. So that's, you know, that's obviously the way that works. But you know, the whole, the whole issue of flooding, my people came here about a hundred and fourteen years ago and near the Calumet River, and from my great-grandfather on, we all experienced that. And I, in my life, as a child and later as an adult, there is, there are few things that feel worse than being flooded. I've been there, and I've experienced, so many other people have as part of my job also. There's this feeling, at least I had, when one of the places I lived in flooded significantly, is I never felt the same about the house. I never, I really didn't. I mean, I just never felt as good about it. That's number one. No matter how much you do to fix it up, maybe not everybody feels that way, but that's, that was my... And the other thing is, of course, I do it now with my job, but the other thing is, every time it starts to rain, you go, "Oh, is this going to be the one that's going to happen again?" And then you, and then you, just more and more rain comes, and then pretty soon I get ready to go out. But you always think, I do it my job now because it's reflex, but when you've been flooded, you always have that feeling, and it's a, it's not a good feeling. Or worse yet, you're gone somewhere, and you, you know, and you don't, and there's nothing you can do. A couple of things, Mr. Volberg said something. The unexpected. We've got a lot of people, I know a lot about stormwater. We've got a lot of, a lot of people that know a lot about stormwater. But the unexpected gets us every time. It's just the nature of things. I've seen it happen in Highland. I've seen it happen along the river. I've seen it too many times. This is one of the good things about a conservancy district. A conservancy district has the ability to respond to anything unexpected. And there are people that said, have said, and this is a concern, "Well, they can raise as much money as they want. They can raise those fees as much as they want." Well, there was, it wasn't that many years ago when you could do the same thing. You counsel people. But you didn't. You raised it for what you thought was necessary for the good running of the city. You think that these people aren't going to do any differently that? Of course they are. Let's say the unexpected happens, and you've got a fee set by the legislature. What happens then? Maybe they'll give it to you, maybe they won't, in terms of the money you need. And of course, you have to wait. One of the things that I have on my job is, I can, I have money, and I can declare an emergency with the county commissioners and shift money, okay? That's incalculable, how helpful that is. A conservancy district has all kinds of flexibility. One of the reasons that you, that you, and by the way, every councilman was given this last time we were here, lots of information about the conservancy district. Councilman Markovich, a lot of it. Couple councilmen have called me about some questions they had about it. Some did, some didn't. Might not have gotten one to the council president, I hope we did, because he wasn't here.
I was in town, but I can't, I mean, I do have...
Okay, very, very good, very good. So it's not that you haven't had information shared. But someone says, "Well, what about some of these details?" Well, I'm going to tell you something. I don't know about all the details. You know why? Because I'm not going to be involved in it. There's going to be nine elected people, just like you. I can't predict what you're going to do tonight.
Initially, though, I have to correct you on that because what the attorney said is that the commission ordered...
That's correct, that's correct. You can't, you can't hold an election tomorrow. If you want to get the thing going, you have to get some people in place.
Let's just be clear so that everybody's on the same page.
All right, that's fair. But I'm talking for the next hundred years, okay? Where this council is going to be making decisions that will be unexpected, and you won't know, and you may have to spend some money. But if something comes up unexpected for, whether it's the city of Hammond or whether it's for the Little Calumet River or something that goes into the Little Calumet River, I want to know that there's money available. And so are these people going to go out? Well, and blow money all, I don't think so. Well, first of all, now here's something. One of the members of Little Calumet River Basin Commission said in a meeting last week, I think it was last week, he said, "Well, it's going to be nine salaries, nine cars, nine radios, nine da-da-da-da, all this kind of stuff." Wrong. That was just political rhetoric, okay? Nobody's going to be paid anything except per diem. That's what's going to be turned into the judge. And so I can't tell you every detail because the judge can change it. Maybe the DNR, the DNR will change it after it has a public hearing for everybody in the district. Maybe they'll change it. Maybe they'll change it because, you know, Councilman Hanyosa sends them a letter and says, "I want to do it this way," or whatever. So I can't say exactly. But I can tell you this, and here's another, another thing that people have been talking about. If you pass this tonight, and only you, I will not take it to the judge. I will not, with Hammond alone. That would, in my opinion, that would be inappropriate. That would not be the way to do things.
So since you said that now, and I'm going to take you a word of your...
Absolutely.
A man of your word, what other cities are you trying to include in it?
All of them. We're working, I cannot tell you how many meetings I've gone to and how many meetings I have scheduled. And I have, every place I've gone, I've told them the same thing. Hammond is not going to tell you what to do.
Are you in opposition of it being passed tonight?
I sure hope it's passed tonight so we can get moving.
I said, "Are you in opposition of it being passed?" In terms of, or should I say, are you against the fact of if we should postpone?
If you postpone it, you postpone the whole process. And I submit that, as a number of people said, how much more information are you going to get? The info, and by the way, Mr. President, I would ask that you add one more name to that list, the name of Thomas Burke, the list that you have there, Thomas Burke, engineer, who was involved in this process. At any rate, so I'm trying to, I'm trying to respond to some of the people, things that people have said. No, I'm not going to go to the judge and say, "One city, five percent or ten percent of the..."
But in reality, all you need is...
Five percent.
That's it.
Five percent.
And that would be...
It will, I am telling you here, in front of God and country, that will not happen. It will not happen. It doesn't make sense for it to happen, and it doesn't make sense for me personally to do it. Now, so why did, why did I get involved in this anyway? Well, I ask myself that a lot, but I have to tell you this as I describe some of these things. Do not let Mr. Repay tell you it's about him. It's not. And it's not about him, and he will tell you that. It's not about him versus the conservancy district. It's apples and oranges. It's two different things. I'm going to tell you how I got involved in this and how the mayor got involved in this. It's, you need to know this. We, for some time, of course, everybody's interested in this, one day, a bill was introduced to the legislature during this past session, or maybe it was before, I can't remember, fifteen seventy-four. Usually, a bill is introduced with fanfare by its authors. This was introduced mainly by Representative Soliday from Porter County. And it just, just went in the hopper. Nobody said anything. So a couple days later, I go, I'm a member of NERC. So I go to NERC in regional planning, and I'm sitting next to Dave Schaefer, the clerk treasurer for Munster, who's the chairman of the legislative committee. So he gives a legislative committee report, and he doesn't say anything about fifteen seventy-four. Fifteen seventy-four, in rough terms, would put a twenty-five-dollar fee, well, you've heard about that, would put a fee on everybody in part of the conservancy district. Dan, would you show me that map that shows the, what their thing was, their proposal was? Anyway, part of the watershed, that's what their proposal was. And a number of other things. And we looked at that and said, "Wait a minute, this is a little unusual." So I brought that up to the, to NERC. And you know, NERC is made up of forty, fifty elected officials from three counties. Not a single official in that room had ever heard of that bill. And it was put into the legislature with a fee for many, many people and many, many people in Lake County. The interesting thing, this whole area in blue, which is part of the watershed, that wasn't included. They say, "Well, now we'll include it." I mean, it took me, I don't know how long to get them to think of it, but they said, "Well, we're not going to include Porter County." But this is the watershed, okay? That was, but I... Porter County. But this is the watershed, okay? That was, but I, I don't, I don't wanna belabor the, so anyway, fifteen seventy-four. So your mayor, uh, immediately went to Representative Soliday to talk to him about it. He yelled at him and he said, don't mess with this bill. I went to him, he yelled, he screamed at me until they pushed us in another room. He said, if you try, if you try to amend this in any way, and he told the mayor the same thing, I'm gonna blow it up and it's gonna be on your head when it floods. That, and now, bear in mind, and the reason I tell you is, cause we, no input ahead of time, and they didn't want any input afterwards, okay? That's the difference between a conservancy district, uh, and, 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 and their attitude. And the same thing is, Mr. Re, Mr. Repay has never gone to NERC because he's been told not to by his commission. Now, here's all these officials that want some information about the Little Cayman River. He doesn't go. Doesn't have to. Now, let, so we were concerned about this, and here is why. You say, well, what's changed and why are you interested now? Fifteen seventy-four makes us, would make us the only place in the state of Indiana that has no local control, okay, and with this kind of pro, uh, thing with a commission, but is taxed or feed or whatever you wanna have, whatever you wanna say. Where the money comes from the locals, but the governor makes the appointments. The only one, the only one. And you know what he says, well, be, you know, and what he says about the people in this area.
What does he say?
It was said earlier, you deserve, what was that? You deserve all the, the corrupt government, you get all kinda stuff. But I submit to you, but what I submit to you is a conservancy district is a lot, a lot like a city council, okay? They're just folks. They have to have some qualifications, uh, and, but they don't have to campaign like you have to. But they're just people that wanna do right for their community. What's the wrong with that? And they're local and they're picked by their community. Now, I don't, you know, you can say that's political, but I say that's America. And, and I also, the, the, the thing that, the Kern and Shepherd Report, that is conveniently used so many times by so many people, and I have to say right off the bat, I don't agree with everything, all the details in it, but the first part of it, the guiding principles, the core principles at the heart of this, allow only elected officials to approve taxes and debt. That's pretty clear, and that makes sense. That's, makes sense. I learned it in high school, I learned it in college, and I learned it in, in, in the street of Lake County and in Indianapolis when I worked there, and, uh, and other places, okay, when I worked in the government there. That's the way you do it. So we, we, so the mayor and I said, wait a minute, we're gonna be the only area to be, to, to, to be run by this, like this? And that's when we started looking at it. And so then we talked to people, and then we got a, um, a paper that was written by the Munster Clerk Treasurer proposing a conservancy district years ago. Talked to some of the people that had been with Congressman Visklosky. This is not a new concept. Of course it isn't. As you were told, this is sixty years old. This is the state's way of saying, here, you control it. The state is not gonna give us money to maintain the Little Cayman River. So this is the, the tried and true method that's been given for many, many years so that the locals can do their thing and, and, and be represented the same way. Uh, somebody said, this isn't going to, uh, lower, uh, uh, this isn't going to lower your flood insurance. No, it, it, that's not, the, no, the project has to be certified. I'm gonna talk about the project in a minute. The other reason we got, we became concerned. For instance, do you know the project's not anywhere near being done? Are you aware of that? It's not. It's years down the road, okay? And here's some of the things that needs to be done. The Griffith levee, ask them how much that will cost and what the plans are and when that will be done, okay? Forest Avenue, when will that be done? What are the plans? How much will it cost? The Southmore area, when will it be done? How much will it cost? Uh, they've got about five, five point million, uh, that they can draw down right there, and, and then, now, am I criticizing the commission? No. But you're not really getting a feel for what's going on. And the reason that they have money issues and the reason it's not moving the way we would all like to see it is because you try dealing with the Corps of Engineers sometimes, okay? It's not, it's not easy. And there's condemnation issues that obviously are difficult. And there's one more thing. When the whole project is done and you go to the Illinois-Indiana state line, okay, and, and you, you look at the levee and you measure the levee, the levee in Illinois is lower, is lower than in Indiana. So in a huge event of the wrong kind, this might not ever happen, but in the huge event of the wrong kind, when there's a huge amount of water going to Illinois, what happens when it hits the Illinois line if nothing is done? If they, if not, if something isn't put in there, what we call a tieback, okay? What happens is it gets to the area where it's lower and it'll just circle right around into Hammond, maybe into Munster too. That's a fact. So that has to be provided for, big bucks. So we're talking Griffith levee, two, two places in, in, uh, Hammond that haven't even started yet, and the tieback in Hammond, all for five point five million dollars. What I'm saying, ladies and gentlemen, is they've got their hands full and God bless them, and they're doing the best that they can do, and it's difficult dealing with some of the issues that they have to deal with. That's to finish the job. That's what they're, that's why they were created. They can try to broaden it if they want, but they were created to do this, this, to work with this federal project. What I'm talking about is not just a federal project, I'm talking about the future of Lake County and the future in Porter County too of the Little Cayman River, uh, and, and, and not just one part of it. Let me try, let me try to very quickly, let, very quickly, look at some of the, the questions that were raised. Um, the judge is not an officer of the, uh, conservancy district, number one.
What judge?
Uh, the judge that was mentioned, the, the Circuit Court Judge, okay? Uh, number two, you can talk about politics all you want. Did I ever, did I talk politics when, when that commission was formed and two of the members were Republican precinct chairman? No, no, we just let it, we just let it go. If we Democrats had, had done that, front page of the paper, I'll guarantee you, I'll guarantee you. But that's what happened. The governor put two precinct, local precinct chairman, one from Highland, one from Griffith. Is that necessarily bad? I'm not saying it is, but don't tell me politics. Come on. You know, you, you know, you can't have it both ways. I talked to you about salaries. I mean, that, that fable, okay? And then about the power grab that somebody tried to talk about. Power grab for what in government is a few million dollars, you know, for, no, this is a headache. I can tell you it's been a headache since I started talking about this. And, 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 and this is a power grab? There's a few people that work for a commission and it's just hard work, you know? Ask these people that are involved, they'll tell you. And, and I'll tell you what, what my staff does and, and what I do. It's, it's, it's impossible to be a power grab. In fact, I just showed the gentleman there, if you look at the districts as the way we set them up, and if you really wanna take a quick look at this, there's probably out of the nine, to stretch it, if you wanted to say, who's gonna be a Democrat, who's gonna be a Republican, you're probably talking, uh, a maximum of four, four Democratic districts, four out of nine, the way this is set up. How was it set up? Well, first, and all of this stuff, we, we, we put a lot of time and thought into it. First, I was gonna do what the subwatersheds, you know, Turkey Creek, Beaver Dam, Haiti Ditch, Hart Ditch, all that. And then I said, wait a minute, this is gonna be too complicated the way it is. So we tried to stay with that, but we just kept it by community lines. So for instance, you got Hammond. Um, Highland, Griffith and Tuck, Cayman Township are together. Gary on one side is, is by itself and on the other side. Dyer, Sherbone, Munster are together and so on. And, and we tweaked this once, this could be, you know, this could be tweaked again. That's why it's so hard to say precisely, because to do it right, we have to keep listening, okay? One of the things that was, was suggested to me, make Porter County one district, okay? Uh, and that's what we did, even though it's a little less parcels in it, because they have their own feelings about things, so they would have.
Well, how do they, and since you said that, how does Porter County feel about it?
Um, I don't, I imagine they don't feel very good about it because it, we're Lake County.
You would imagine?
Because we're Lake County. Because we're Lake County, and that's, that's the way it is. This is an opportunity for people to show that they don't, they don't always have to feel that way about things, okay? Um, now, the other thing, in terms of the districts, and this, I need, I can't, I can't emphasize this anymore, I have to do it again. Let us say a year from now, let's say this passes, it goes into effect and it, and it, and it starts the process rolling. First of all, there's money built in here. By, by the way, the, the administrative costs in the budget that's presented by this, a hundred and ten thousand dollars less than the current Cayman River Basin Commission. Hundred and ten thousand dollars less, okay?
Paying your lawyer's fees now. Paying your lawyer's fees now.
Nobody.
Okay.
Nobody. I just went and asked the best.
You're going pro bono? What, what's that?
I don't know. I did, yeah. I, the best, I just asked the best, the, the, the expert in the state of Indiana to, uh, tell us what to do. And because he worked for NERC, um, and I see him on a regular basis, he said, yeah. And his, his associate is here tonight, and that, that would be Mr. Hollenbeck. There's nobody in the state that knows more than he. So I wanted to get the best. And that's the way I feel about this whole thing. Now, oh, here's, here's some other things. Um, Dan Gardner, uh, somebody says, well, Dan Gardner, he's, he's gonna like run this whole thing or something. Um, you know, that's just baloney. That's, that's, that's just, um, I, I can't ever imagine it happening. Uh, and, and, you know, there's all kinds of misinformation about that. Um, you know, and then they, people restart the urban legends about me that people wanna believe and all that. I, I tell you, I, to be honest with you, I, I can't remember the last time I've been abused, personally abused so much as this. But why? Why, why, but why am I doing this? I absolutely get nothing from this, and I have tried to figure out what Mayor McDermott gets out of this, and I can't get, figure anything other than we know it's the right thing and, and.
As I requested earlier, before the council meeting started, if you wanna be escorted out, it will happen.
My constituents know what's best for them, not you. You don't live over here.
And, uh, ma'am, ma'am, I'm elected by the whole council. Ma'am, I'm elected by the whole council. You're not, you're not.
Councilwoman.
Really? How much longer are you gonna monopolize the conversation?
Ma'am, people said they wanted information, I'm giving them information.
Public hearing.
Now.
We are.
And I am a taxpayer, and, uh, in terms of.
We're trying to push this, and I mean, enough is enough. We need, we need to listen to everybody else.
If you want information, I'm the person, because I'm the person that's got, got the facts, I'm trying to give the information and, and you know.
Okay, Mr. Ventil, we're gonna.
Okay, well, I'll try to wrap it up, but, but the fact of the, the fact of the matter is to, we used to have, we used to have, um, uh, officials, uh, county officials breakfast meetings. I'll never forget it. Um, it was, uh, it was kind of a caucus, and there'd be eight or ten or twelve of them. And one of them got mad at me, one of the officials that's got a lot, and he said, ah, you're nothing but a ditch digger, said that to me. Nobody's interested in this stuff for power? Come on. This is hard work, this is difficult stuff. I'm interested in this because my people came here a hundred and fourteen years ago and, 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 and experienced the difficulties of this river, and I wanna live, leave a positive legacy. I get nothing from this, from this, except grief from people for no good reason that are trying to say that I'm trying to do something wrong and, and there, I get nothing out of this except I hope this goes because I am convinced after many, many years as a stormwater professional that this is the right way to go.
I just got one question. Did you have an appointment on the river basin prior to the two thousand and eight flood?
No, no. The, uh, uh, when the flood happened, the governor had, I don't know, three, uh, and he, he hadn't even filled them. Hadn't even, they weren't even filled.
So who was responsible for the river basin at that point?
Uh, who was responsible for it? There was a commission of eleven, eleven people from what I understand. I didn't pay that much attention to it at the time, as most of us didn't.
Until the flood and then everybody, oh.
Sure, sure, absolutely. And, 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 and people that, but my job was taking care of those little creeks and, and ditches and drains, and I, and I, and, and we've made awesome difference, okay? So I was doing my job and, and every, nobody in this room was paying that much attention. In fact, I knew, I have to tell you one more thing. I have to tell you one more thing, okay?
We gonna have to move on, Mr. Ventil. I appreciate your opinion.
Okay, one of the problems.
We need to move on.
One of the problems, one of the problems that the old commission had and the new commission has, one of the, one of the problems that the old commission had and the new commission, they never got enough money each year to move the project along from the legislature. You know why? Most of the legislators weren't that interested. They had to get a certain amount of matching funds to match with what, what the Corps had and what Pete Visklosky got. And year after year, they didn't get it. Here's the reality of what's now. I told you about the projects, the, the things that aren't being done now, there's not, there's not enough money to do them. Listen to what I'm saying. It'll be denied later tonight. There's not enough money to do it, and it's a bad deal. Somehow or other, we gotta help together to get money to finish the project first and help the commission finish the project in the next three or four years. And, and in the meantime, get the maintenance going.
Okay, next speaker, Roof.
All right.
And after Roof is Beverly comes, and then George Storia, and then George Shannon. Alvin Cheek has left the building. All right.
And Mr. President, I plan on being a lot shorter than Mr. Ventil.
Thank you.
With his rhetoric of going on and on and on, and I do wanna dispute the fact that nobody cared about the commission twenty years ago, because we were all there. And I will have you know that. And the history of the Little Cal Commission goes on and on, and the new commission that has taken over has taken up a lot of the slack, and they are doing very, very well. One of the things before every Little Cal Commission meeting, after they do the pledge allegiance, they have the chairman's report. Bill Baker is the chairman, and I first of all wanna say that I really regret that it's brought up that Republicans versus Democrats are on an appointed committee. We don't care who they are. They are appointed to do a job by the governor, no matter what commit, what , uh, party he is in. These people do a job. I don't care if you're pink, purple, Republican, Democrat, independent, whatever you are. If you are the right person to do that job, it is for you to do the best job that you can do for the people that you are elected or appointed to do the job for. Bottom line, period. And if anybody thinks that they're gonna get in and do it because they're a Democrat or because they're a Republican and not do what their people want them to do, they are the ones that are failing in their job. The chairman of the Little Cal Commission, every meeting at the very, very beginning, he says a couple words that really bring everything to fruition. And Bill Baker always refers to pictures that he brings at the commission meeting of the flood, of the devastation of the flood, and the people that were affected by that flood. And one of the things that he says, quote, "I look at these flood pictures. I remind myself that this is why I'm sitting in this seat, and this can never happen again." myself that this is why I'm sitting in this seat, and this can never happen again, and we are dedicated to not make this happen again." Now, will we get that same kind of dedication from people who are picked for, out of these districts, who don't, that are not involved with what's going on? The Little Cal Commission in its current state are people who are involved with what's going on. They know what's going on with the Army Corps. I've reiterated some of the different things the Army Corps has done incorrectly. There's also some investigations that are pending, looking into some of the things that the Army Corps did in the wetlands, prior to having any kind of permits to do them. Who knew? Well, somebody stuck something underneath the table. They also had some bad construction by the contractors that the Army Corps picked on the new levees. They also had some bad engineering by the Army Corps on part of the project that had to stop the project so that the Army Corps could re-engineer that part of the project. Who's staying on top of that? The commission is. Are the people of this conservancy district going to be as dedicated as this commission? You need to decide who you think is going to be the best people to take over this maintenance of the river that they've put so much into. It's not just Democrat, Republican, it's not just Mayor, it's not just Vantil, it's not just Repay. Who is going to be the best dedicated to do this job? And I personally feel that it's the people that are already doing the job, that know the job, and the commission. Nobody has said anything about how this money that the conservancy is going to be acquiring is going to be spent by the conservancy. Does each district get their own little funding? Does each district to just get to say, "Well, I'm gonna spend my money my way"? Well, I'm gonna spend my money my way. That's not the way that the commission runs. The commission spends the money where it is needed to do the job that has to be done to cover the entire river. You can't have it broken up by, "Oh, I get fifty mil, and I get fifty mil, and now you get fifty mil, and but I'm gonna spend mine here, and I'm gonna spend mine there." That can't be done, and I think that's one of the questions that have been brought up, and why we're so nervous about giving somebody else control of the money who doesn't really care what they're doing, except he's padding his pocket and giving it to one of his buddies who's a contractor, which is what Lake County is known for. The, anybody not believe that? Why do you think the governor appointed the people on the commission? Why do you think downstate doesn't trust Lake County? Because soon as somebody gets their fingers in the pot, it's gonna go in their pocket. It's not gonna go to where it's supposed to be dedicated to going to, and that's what you have to decide. And rushing into this decision is a bad decision. You should think about it, you should go to bed tonight and figure out what you really want to do, and what is the best for everybody, not just Hammond, not just Munster, not just Highland. What is the best for everybody? Because, again, I agree, it's back on your heads. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you forgot my name, because...
What's your name, sweetheart?
Shell Wangyin.
Shell, well, come on up, I'm gonna let you go next, how about that?
Thank you.
You're the next contestant.
Thank you. Sir, don't come over to our city and disrespect our council, because I take offense to that, and I'm a Republican woman, but this isn't about anything to do with this. This is our community. This is our river. Don't come over and disrespect our council. Thank you. Okay. Years ago, a friend of mine, Chuck Barman, had done a study on this river. His family has studied the river for, since the eighteen hundreds, and the floodgates in Chicago. He has sent this study to Mitch Daniels to read and to evaluate. I think as a taxpayer and a person who cares about this community, we, the people here in Hammond, who have voted, all you gentlemen and ladies up there, to take our views and make a decision, an intelligent decision, on this, because it is going to affect us. And I sell real estate in this town, and it affects a lot of people here. So I don't think this should be a rushed decision. And there is election, and if we do what Porter County does, because I'm also from Porter County, we did a referendum when we did not want the train. We did not want our money spent, so we did a referendum, and guess what? The taxpayers said, "No." Thank you for your time.
Uh, Beverly, and then after Beverly is George Stoya, and then George Janick.
Mr. Higgs, I really appreciate the fact that I know you're listening, because you ask questions, and that's very, I, I'm impressed. And for those council members that don't want us, in two weeks, to be able to come before you and give you more information, I'm really kind of appalled at that. It's three years later after the flood, and we still are working. To not be able to take two weeks to listen to the truth and not a bunch of bull... I was raised in East Chicago under Mayor George. I know politics. Moved to Hessville, so I have a lot of friends and family in Hessville. Now I'm a resident of Munster. I live right across from the river, we lost a hundred thousand dollars of our home, and for you not to give us two weeks to present, because I read in the paper, I read in the paper that it's already been foregone, that the, that McDermott had the, the votes. So those of you that voted against the two weeks, now I know who the people are that are in his pocket with your votes, and shame on you. Shame on you. And how would you like that if twenty-eight years ago, you started going to these River Basin meetings with Mr. Adam Benjamin, when Visklosky was his appointed rep assistant? And you've gone to these River Basin meetings, and when you get up and speak, you're asked by the town officials, "Don't ask questions at the next meeting. Don't make any waves. Don't do this, don't do that." And you have the nerve to question the most honest, reputable men that have been working for us? Dan Gardner, he was our watchdog. Mr. Vantil tried to kind of put this under the table. I've been to his office, I've talked to him personally. Do you know that in these twenty-eight years, we have never had one thing done on the, on the Little Cal River? Not one, because I've been to all the meetings. I know that this is a push job, and I shame you, I shame you, I shame you, for anybody that does, cannot see that we have lost a lot, and we're still losing, because I'm paying if I were to take flood insurance, which I didn't have to have, because it was not on our street. When we bought her house, was not even a flood zone, so our mortgage was not predicated on any flood insurance. Now, anybody that buys in the area, if they have to have a mortgage, has to have flood insurance, whether they'd like it or not, they don't have a choice. Now, we had a choice not to take it, once they were mandating it, but we'd never had a flood before. Until the last three or four years, we never had really a threat of any consequence. All right, all this to say, Mr. Gardner is now an employee of Mr. Vantil. How much comfort do you think I take in that? That if he has any say? How much comfort any of us? And would you have that comfort if you were in my shoes, sitting up here right now, and you've gone through twenty-eight years of begging, borrowing, and stealing, trying to get somebody to pay attention to us? When he said nobody cared, I could've got up and just absolutely taken him apart. This Polish, German temper, wanted to get up and shout, but by law, I couldn't do that. Now I've got, now I've got the ability to do that. He's a liar, because he's told, he told an absolute lie, that nobody was paying any attention, nobody cared. The only problem is, the man that he hired four months after he was kicked out of the River Basin Commission job, what the heck is going on in those people's minds that won't give us the ability to tell the truth about what's going on? Bill Baker calls me personally, do you think Mr. Vantil will call me personally? Because I left a message with Mr. Baker's wife. He called me as soon as he got home from work. He has a job in the real world, and then sacrifices time, so does everybody on the commission for River Basin. They have no ulterior motives, they don't answer to anybody, except to us, the constituents. And every week, we go, or every month, we go to the town council meetings, we go to the River Basin Commission meetings, we go to any meeting they ask us to go to that represents us, the people. And that's what they do with every fiber in their body, and they don't sit there bored out of their gourds, listening to the truth. I re, I really applaud those of you that are starting to wake up, because I know how it works. Shame on you, if you don't care enough to listen to the truth of the men who are giving themselves, not taking, they are giving themselves. And guess who was at our meeting, that's last week, instead of Mr. Vantil? Guess who was sitting in the audience and didn't say boo, Mr. Dan Gardner? As a spy, do you think I want, I kept looking at him, looking at him, says, "How to, where do I know him from? Had I thought of it before I left, or who that man was? I'm glad I didn't know." All I'm saying to you, if they really cared, really, really cared about the constituency, when he says nobody cared, they're the ones that didn't care, and I don't think they still do, except for the power grab. The power grab, now that they see it, that's what they want, and they're salivating over it. Shame on you.
And Mr. Janick, you're next up. You already signed in.
Just making a note, just making a note. So much has, so much has come out, it's hard to stay atop of it. Um, um, you know, to the extent that Mr. Vantil suffers, uh, a negative, uh, um, people have a negative view of him, bear in mind that what is backing him up here, in terms not only of administrative expertise, is David Hollenbeck. Anybody at all familiar in the legal, in the legal profession in Porter County, and I think, eh, eh, with NERC and Lake County? Mr. Berger perhaps could testify to it, and if Christine Cantor was here, she would tell you, Hollenbeck is sterling. This guy's been around, and for his associate to be here, we've, you've got top-notch, uh, legal representation here, that's reviewed this plan by Mr. Vantil. So, eh, eh, any, uh, incompetency, or, uh, if you want to go that route, nefarious intent would have been smoked out by David, I guarantee you. And, and for, and for him to, uh, to remain connected, for his associate to, to sit here, along with an engineer, because this is, there's a lot of, you know, expert, uh, it's not just information. In all honesty, I don't think, uh, most, if not all of us, yes, we can take in the information, we can form broad, general concepts of what's going on, but getting into the mathematics and the calculations, you've got to have engineering expertise. But this is not what this is about here. This conservancy district is an administrative apparatus, as far as I can tell. The current, um, uh, uh, Little Calumet River Basin Commission, I think that's how it goes, um, as far as I can see, is a, is a contract administration agency. They're administering, you know, they're, in a sense, they're, they're just administering contracts, they've got a construction project. And what's happening here is they want to, you know, you know, there, there's a push, and, and, and it's a legitimate push, to extend, you know, their time, and say, "Okay", you know, I, I guarantee you, when Dan Repay went there a year and a half ago, what it was, he didn't know, he didn't know anything about what he knows now. No way. There's a learning curve for everybody, so, you know, there has to be a certain amount of expertise, but that's gonna have to be gained. Now, I don't know to what extent these, these, uh, district, uh, representatives, do you really think that they're gonna sit there and start making engineering decisions? Mechanical engineering, dealing with volume, pressure, hydraulics, pneumatics? I don't think so. That's gonna be the work of contracted for engineers. You guys know this, I mean, this is, it's common sense. But anyway, getting back to the, to the contract administration thing, and now, they, they want to extend it. The, then, in the infinite wisdom of our Republican governor, one, he forgot to fill in, uh, fill in one of the, uh, uh, spots on the commission, so there's a commissioner that's missing from the, uh, 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 current, uh, uh, commission, and, and it's not, it's not funded. So, you know, uh, uh, according, we heard, just, just heard Mr. Vantil say that there's about, what, three, four years of work, construction work, you know, that still needs to be done before we can even start to, I'm sure it's gonna be, you know, a, a parallel, you're gonna have to have maintenance while it's being constructed, but it's not even fully constructed, the construction aspect of it isn't finished yet. And, and Mr. Repay, and, and I guess the current commission, says, "Well, hey, you know, we're already in place, kind of like, let's just extend it out." But the point is, we didn't have any say in it, and, according to the Kernan Report, I always forget the, uh, uh, the first name on that, which I never hold with that thing anyway. That's a lot of ivory tower, you know, "This is what we should do." How many times have you heard the word, "This is what we should do"? "You ought to do this." Yeah! In a perfect world, and speaking of perfect world...
One question, where's the ivory tower at?
Ivory tower, that, that, that's a metaphor for people that are insulated from the real world, and, and, and people that use that word, "Well, you should," and do these studies. I mean, there, there's an old saying, that studies reflect who pays for them. I mean, that's just, that's not just a cliche either. Uh, but, but getting back to the, uh, what you might call it, oh, um, yeah, so here, we have this proposal to localize it, and kind of recreate it anew, and instead of perhaps having this thing evolve, where guys like Ed Salade from Valparaiso can determine, uh, you know, and, and have the people from downstate Indiana, who, who care nothing about us up here, determine how much we're gonna pay. I mean, that's just the true logic of it, you know, eh, and, and, and people worry, you guys are worried about information, I, I think, deep down, in, in the recesses of, of your mind here, because of the, the, uh, the, uh, the intensity of, of this decision, I guess, uh, two things. One, you're never gonna have perfect information. The gentleman from Highland that went to Morton High School was up here earlier, you know, two weeks from now, you're gonna need more information, you're gonna need all this minutia, and you're gonna lose sight of the, the forest, because you're gonna be lost in the trees. And, and the idea is, you need, you need a concept of what's happening, and, and this is all about a funding mechanism, and, 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 and local governance. And, and, and so, it's, uh, this idea of perfect information, it doesn't exist, it's an ideal. You know, everything's contingent. Economists speak about this all the time, imperfect information, that's what we live on, we, we make the best decision. There is no right decision. You're gonna have to make, you guys are gonna have to make the best decision, you got enough information. Eh, I don't know what, what you're gonna delay about, I mean, it, it's just, uh, you got it here. Um, I got another point, and I can't remember it. Um, perfect information, um, oh, most importantly, you heard it, we all heard it. Mr. Vantil says he will not take this to the judge and have a petition filed on the vote of the city of... vote of the city of Hammond alone. Now, come on, think about this. He said this in front of everybody. It's on that television, we've got a reporter here, he won't, Hammond is not the sole, uh, determination, his vote here, your vote here, is not the sole, uh, disposition of how this thing is going to go. And so, I don't know, there, I don't see any point in delaying anything. I mean, let's just, you guys are here to make decisions, that's what you signed up for. You're not going to get any better information, you really aren't. If you can't get the broad, general outline here, because everything's going to have to be worked out and developed in the details, and all the administrative details are going to be worked out anyway. I mean, you're looking here, you're looking to enable. This is more or less enabling legislation, what we're talking, and enabling the structure, enabling things to get going. This is the enabling stage. But I guarantee you, what I said earlier about Mr. Hollenbeck, that guy's, that guy's reputation is gold, and if he's still on this project, and if he sent his representative here, you've got a good presumption of its legitimacy, at the very least, a good presumption. That's not to say that's all there is, I'm just saying, it's something you can bank on. Many a person has banked on the reputation Hollenbeck and has not gone wrong. And that, anybody who knows him in Lake and Porter County will attest to, guarantee it. Thank you.
George Janik, and then after George is Dan Repay, and then Thomas Burke. Thomas Burke is the last speaker.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, that's a hard act to follow. There's a, getting to speak last, you get an opportunity to hear all the arguments that are, that are brought before you, and probably the most compelling one is that, uh, hi, I'm from, I'm from the government, you guys have a problem, and the reason you have a problem is because you don't have enough government. So I'm here to bring you even more government. There's a lot of urban legends that were brought out here tonight, and then the surveyor made that comment, said, commented to that fact about urban legends, and to be honest with you, I just couldn't write them fast enough as they were being generated during his comments. Uh, urban legends such as, uh, wonderful anecdotes that were took place as to how this entire idea came about in the state legislature. While there's some truth to that, obviously, it's, uh, it's one-sided, and it's the side that you would, he would like to have you hear. Um, there's also the statement that's made about the Conservancy Districts are the only one that can respond to emergency. That's not true. We've had other people, in fact, recently out of the commission respond, and other municipalities have responded in the event that there were situations on the Cal River, so, um, there's no fact behind that either. Councilman Pinker indicated that the Conservancy District will help pull his people out of the flood insurance in a flood zone, while it takes the levies to be certified by the Corps of Engineers and then FEMA to remove it before that'll take them out of the flood insurance. So, uh, obviously, there's a need for more information. Um, talked about all the wonderful anecdotes to include things such as, um, the elected officials who'll be serving on this commission are going to have qualifications. Well, I'm not quite sure what qualifications you can, uh, enact or enable in order for you to run for one of these Conservancy District positions. We haven't heard about that, uh, or brought up in any previous discussions, but, uh, the previous speaker indicated that, of course, you wouldn't expect these people to have that kind of knowledge or information, and you would do what? Hire consultants or contractors. So right off the bat, you see, uh, get a little bit of an insight as to how this commission is going to operate. The other urban legend brought out, well, you know, this, the, the taxing levy and the bonding is all going to have to go before the Circuit Court Judge and the DLGF and the State Board of Accounts. You're, they're absolutely right. But you know what? They're also exempt from the property tax caps, and we fought, we fought long and hard to get those, uh, tax rates capped at 1%, 2%, and 3%. These are exempt from the caps. So all you have to do is justify a need, and then it gets approved. Everybody agrees that, out of all the conversation here, that we need O and M, we need the operation and maintenance. The problem is how to achieve it more than anything else, and what, what funding mechanism you'll use. They would like to tell you that the commission fairly represents all the constituents within the, uh, within the watershed area. Would it really? We've heard examples, and you've seen them before, where each particular location has its own particular problems along the river. And if you're talking about a regional or a district representative, how can they best represent that particular need? And then you bring it before a board of nine people that you have to sell it to. It's not the case right now. In fact, when you appoint the new, as they indicated, the county commissioners will appoint members to this board initially, and then they'll be elected, where's all of that experience that these people on the current commission and executive director have acquired, not only in the construction phases, but also understanding all the different problems along the river? How are you going to replace that? And you know, if you're, if you elect and rotate new people in and out of those offices, then you're going to have to reinvent that learning curve all over again. You think that it's going to take four or five years, as was indicated here, to complete the construction project? When will you ever get enough knowledge and experience base to deal with the operation and maintenance on that river? How long will it take before you acquire enough understanding of all of its unique problems in the communities before you can adequately service those needs? Then ask yourself, how much money will it take? Remember, this is not capped by state statute. It's whatever is needed and then gets approved. The operation and maintenance obviously needs to be addressed, but the one thing you did here today, right now, is the people who follow this and have been involved in it, the people who are affected, are the people who want a voice in it. We as Hammond have enough represent, we have enough technically by statute to turn around and approve this tonight and quote, move it forward. You heard the surveyor give his word, he, we had everything except the Bible, and if somebody has a Bible, we should probably bring that up, to make sure that we get all of this in writing and also sworn before God and the general public. But you really don't need that, because the common sense that needs to be, that needs to prevail in the council's decision here today is to recognize the fact that you have all the power and authority to move this forward, and the prudent thing to do would be what was suggested earlier. And that's basically to table this for right now. And listen to what other, bring in all the input necessary, and not only table it, but turn around and let the other communities approve this measure if they feel it's so worthwhile. Because you know, you can bring this ordinance and approve it at any time, and you know you have all of the power and weight to move this forward. So wouldn't it be smarter to turn around and let all those other communities that have a lesser stake by population, turn around and let their voice be heard first? Because if they want it, it'll be approved on their basis and not just by one sole entity in Hammond. And you have to ask yourself, why was it brought up here in Hammond first? Because it just isn't coincidence. Because if it was courtesy and it was the appropriate thing to do, don't you think the place that was hit hardest would have been the first place to have this idea introduced? Shouldn't have been in Munster or at the Munster Town Council? Why here in Hammond? Is it coincidence because we can move it forward or, or move the process forward into the Circuit Court Judges? Is it coincidence that it just happens to be an election year? Is it coincidence that maybe this is just another reelection gimmick? Those are things you have to also consider, because yes, the political powers and the political nature has a stake in this, and it's a component of this decision you're going to make. But common sense, more than anything else right now, realizing that you do have the authority and that you can move it forward, let's see what the other communities have to say, table it for right now. This thing is not going to get done tomorrow as the administration said, well, what would happen if this 30-inch log flooded and it's going to rain two days from now and a 30-inch log comes in and blocks it? You know what? That's a nice what-if scenario. We're not dealing in what ifs going to happen. It's going to take time to put this whole commission and this entire concept together on the ground. But you know what? As it was indicated, this should be brought up and voted on by, all the people are going to be affected. They're the stakeholders in this. The individual people are the stakeholders. They're the ones that are going to be paying these fees. On top of an economically challenged region where foreclosures continue to be the most active and biggest business is home foreclosures, the people who remain here are the ones that need to make the decision in this matter. We shouldn't leave it up to representation. It's not going to happen overnight, and right now, if there is an emergency, let's say in Hammond, like the 30-inch logs floated in there, we're bringing in over $40 million in casino revenue, and of spending that money on the safety to assure not only the safety of the end of our taxpayers and citizens' property is secured, but also the security of their life and limb too, because that's the magnitude of this kind of disaster. And if our casino revenues aren't good enough to apply to the infrastructure and safety of this, until we can get this problem resolved by the state legislature, a basically, an entity, a government entity outside of the realm of Lake County and Lake County political influence, then, then we have to sit back and take a look exactly what kind of a community and what kind of decisions are our elected leaders making. Thank you.
Yeah, just, just hold on. We'll deal on what ifs and the fact that, hold on, just stay right there, it's caught on your front foot. Dan Repay and then Thomas Burke, is Thomas, is Thomas still here? He's going to be after Dan, okay? There you go, there we go. And then I think there's one other person. Ethel, Ethel here. Ethan, Ethan, I'm sorry, Ethan Lo.
I'm sure when you saw one thing on the agenda, you weren't expecting to be here till midnight, so.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I'm sure.
We'll beat the midnight.
I'm enjoying this side of the table, I'm sure. Dan Repay, Executive Director, Little Cal. When people say it's not personal, it is personal. It's personal to me, but it's more importantly, personal to Lori, who on Forest Avenue started a group, went out in her front yard, represents all of them. To Beverly, to Trudy, to Ruth, that all live there, that all understand it. And all the people that come to our meetings, and there's a thousand more, and they're not just people that just want to sit there and, and moan, they're engineers, they're all kinds of professional people that believe that we need a solution to the maintenance. And we've talked about this since May. And I talked about it, and the gentleman that spoke earlier thought that my budget numbers were off. They were too low, and quite honestly, nothing, uh, it was impossible for my numbers to be correct. However, the budget that came in, um, seems to be very similar to the budget that I proposed. Now, he mentioned that, and I, and you guys have heard me, but, you know, he mentioned that $110,000 less administrative costs. One of those costs is the fact that we don't need rent, we don't need to pay, Little Cal pays rent, and we paid rent to NERC, $45,000 a year, and now we don't need to pay it, because it works in his pro forma, that $45,000 isn't needed. However, for us, that'd be a blessing, because that we could spend more money on other things. This is a serious problem, and that's why you see the emotion that's here. And it needs serious answers. And I'm certain that there are some people that don't find this as serious. This is serious to me. I, I left the council to take this on, to take this challenge on. My people moved to Schleicher, and I, in 1960, and I grew up about a nine iron away from the river. And I've seen the flood. Thankfully, didn't have to do anything serious. But to say that it isn't serious, to say that this is just, oh, well, you can just pass it in, if you don't pass it though, you know, then we're, we're gonna, you're going to screw up the whole process, but I swear, I won't go forward with the court. Two weeks doesn't make a difference in this process. Two weeks gives you guys information, gives you guys information, if you haven't taken the tour of the river, take the tour of the river. Find out the true story of how casino money came to be in the state legislature. Not about what we think and what we read in the paper about how it possibly could be. We're not stretching our boundaries. We do operation and maintenance right now. Yes, we're in charge of construction, but yes, we're also in charge of maintenance. We have a preventative maintenance schedule for our pump stations. We paid for the cleaning out of the log. It, it's not something that's out of our jurisdiction, I'll repeat it once again, 14-13-2. Under 4 Subsection 2 provides for the creation, development, maintenance, administration, operation of park, recreation, flood control, and other public works projects. It's simple. We're not stretching our boundaries, we're not doing anything more than what we were asked to do by, by the governor, and if it's governor, the next governor, whether he's a Democrat, or she's a Democrat, or he's a Republican, or she's a Republican, I'd be sitting here telling you the same story. We are doing our job, and that's why it's personal. And they, they lost a lot of theirs, and there's potential for losing a lot of it, and that's personal. To say that we're out of money? $5 million, yeah, we can't finish it all, but what they don't say necessarily is there's a three-to-one match in federal government funds, so that's $20 million. Makes it a little bit different. So, I, I would ask and beg that, that we get the legislators here that we're a part of, of the, uh, Legislation 1574, and talk about that issue, and not worry about a article, and not worry about scare tactics, and not worry about this. I'm quoting everything, and I will have proof for it, and I have shown you proof. The Times editorial, everyone wants to talk about Dr. Rittmeyer, I appreciate Dr. Rittmeyer, I've known him for a long time. But an objective group of people from the Times, who I have no vested interest in whatsoever, I have not purchased any ads from them, I don't know any of them. I asked them to come and allow me to speak what I had to do, just like I'm doing today. And they said, we believe in operation and maintenance, but we don't believe that the Conservancy District is the way to go. It doesn't, water doesn't understand political boundaries. We don't care, I don't care if you're Democrat or Republican, I couldn't tell you the voting records of the five people that I just mentioned, nor do I care. The point is, it needs to get done. All I would ask is that you take a deep breath and remind yourself, this is a very serious problem. I understand, I've been in your seats. I have. And I understand the pressures that go along with it and how things happen. But I will tell you this, I think you need to get the right answers as opposed to responding back and forth. Look at it, take a deep breath, understand fully not only our charter, but the charter of the Conservancy District. I'll put everything that I have on the line, I'm sure the Conservancy District folks will put everything on the line, and I think you'll find the legislators. The people that have come, Senator Marvane has been almost to every meeting, Senator, Representative Reardon, you can ask any of them. I, I would welcome that, to tell you how this happened. And it wasn't because we wanted to be punitive, it wasn't our idea. I was against it, I don't want it. But at the time, you had a House budget bill that, that was that, that was the only vehicle. And the option was, get this, because we have a sick river. The river is ill, and it needs to be fixed. But you know what? To wait another year, they're saying 2012, 2013, this could have been resolved this summer. And just, you know, for, for two last clarifying points. The question by the, the president was asked, did you have an appointment on this commission? And he had an employee that was on this commission that was appointed by the governor. I don't know what the governor was, was he Democrat or Republican, but I'm certain he was qualified because someone appointed him. And the final thing is, to say, what happens if we get a big rain? What happens? Well, we'll be prepared, because we've been meeting with everybody on this, and that's why we were prepared on Friday. And that's why we'll be prepared to die today, tomorrow, or if it happens, Wednesday, whatever that is, we'll be prepared. And we will do the job with no deference to who you are, who you voted for, who you didn't vote for, or what city you live in. That's my commitment, and for me, I've worked with many of you, that's all I have. That's my word. And so, it is personal. It's personal because I truly believe in this project, I wouldn't have left unless I did. And now even more so, when you meet the people and hear the stories, not of the people that flooded, all the people flooded, but some people that are, that are concerned about it. Lori brings a binder to us, and it's going to be two binders pretty soon. Lori brings a binder to us, and it's going to be two binders pretty soon, and she calls us on the carpet, and that's okay. Because you know what? I have to give them answers. So, in the deference of time, I would ask you, beg you, plead you, that you need to take a look at this. You just can't make the decision now. I ask for that, I appreciate your time, and I thank you for all the time that you provided for me earlier this evening as well. Thank you.
Just the later it gets, the more y'all gonna clap, huh? Go ahead, Mr. Burke.
Good evening, Mr. President, Council. Mr. President, you brought up, you know, why change, and it's been brought up, local versus state versus federal control. And that's really what it boils down to. And those who live in the Little Calumet watershed need to contribute to it. It shouldn't be broken up by a transportation road, I-65, it should be by drainage boundaries. That's what's been proposed in the Conservancy District, is to follow the drainage divide, and not by a transportation road. I'm going to give an example. One of the things is, the Little Calumet River Basin is tied with the Army Corps of Engineers. The Army Corps of Engineers brings with it money, but they've also brought in a long history of trying to get this project done over many, many years, and they've struggled to do it. One woman pointed out that they haven't gotten anything done for 28 years. I would disagree, I think they have gotten it done, some things done, it's still not done, but it's been a long, long time with the Army Corps. The project needs to be finished, the Little Calumet River Basin needs to finish the project, and they will. I believe that. I believe the Calumet Burns Conservancy District then needs to take over and have local control for the maintenance. They don't have to turn to the Corps, they don't have to be together with the Corps, they have no binding conditions with the Corps. They can be their own, have local control, they don't have to have state control, they don't have to have the federal control of the Corps. There's concerns about the Conservancy District, you know, moving homes from floodplain, the woman over here spoke about the floodplains and very eloquently explained the different levels of floodplain, A, B, C, D, on people's houses, she did it very well. Not many people understand it as well. The thing about this is that while the Conservancy District doesn't remove the houses from the floodplain, the Conservancy District can make sure that those houses, after FEMA approves it, stays removed. Post-Contrina, the Army Corps changed the rules as far as levees. They're much more stringent than what they used to be. So now you have things that have to be maintained, that is the critical part, because there's be nothing worse than getting the project done, removing many houses from the floodplain, and then having the levees maintained so that those houses could go back into the floodplain. That's why I think the Conservancy District is critical. I bring one other last point, is I've done work in stormwater drainage in Lake County for the last 15 years. I've worked in Maryville, Cedar Lake, Dyer, Highland, all over. And recently, working with the town of Dyer, they raised the concern at their stormwater board, they have a very active stormwater board, about Senate Bill 1574. Enough that the stormwater board wrote a letter to the state legislature saying that we completely disagree moving forward with 1574. So you are not alone in that. The Dyer Stormwater Board was vehemently opposed to it, and they've actually come out in full support of the Conservancy District. And yet, Dyer is the one community, and the proposed fee that has been given to you, they're the one community who's not on the Little Calumet River, but yet it would be paying the highest fees along with those parcels that are adjacent to the Little Calumet River. Yet, because they understand it is a watershed problem, they contribute to the Harkditch, which goes directly into the Little Cal. There are other areas that are a lower fee that are tributary to Turkey Creek, which also goes in Little Cal. But Dyer has yet, even though with the broad understanding that it's a watershed problem, and there's 36 square miles that come in from Illinois into Dyer, into Munster, and up into the Little Cal, they understand it's a watershed problem, and they're fully supportive, the stormwater board has made note of that, of the Conservancy District. So, that was my final comments.
Are there any other communities that you know of that are committed to it?
I have gone with Mr. Surveyor Van Til and Ethan Low to several communities, talking to them, they're all in the process of it, they're all, we've met with several of them on one occasion or two occasions, and we have a process of we're going back there. So, I believe there are several other communities that are for it. I don't know of any as well as I know Dyer that is ready to, has recommended, the stormwater board has recommended approving, joining the Conservancy District.
Ethan, you're next.
Thank you, council members. I will be extremely brief. You have to note, I feel a little bit like LeBron James, sitting in front of you this evening, that's hoping that I close up this public hearing a little bit better than he did the NBA Finals.
LeBron James.
In any event, just to touch on a couple of things that have been discussed this evening. First and foremost, in giving this ordinance consideration and the petition that's attached as Exhibit A, please remind yourself that this is a watershed solution to a watershed problem. Now, there's a number of issues that are being disputed here between the commission and between the individuals that are involved, myself included, with the proposal to create the Conservancy District. But one issue that cannot be disputed is the fact that as it currently stands, the Little Calumet Commission does not have a permanent funding mechanism in place to deal with maintenance. And as a result of that, we have certain options. We've looked at this in a number of different ways, and this is the proposal we've come to you with. We believe that the creation of a Conservancy District, which is as grassroots as it gets, it's created by freeholders, it's governed by freeholders, which are property holders, it's created by the Lake County Circuit Court here, is the preferred method to go. As it stands right now, that Conservancy District and its Board of Directors would have complete control over what fees are assessed, what structures are put in place, how many members are on the Board of Directors, things along those types of things. Now, there is oversight there, there has been some issues related to transparency and some questions raised as to, well, who's to oversee all of this? I think it's also important that you remember that a Conservancy District is a unit of government, much the same way that you are, much the same that any kind of town, county, or other municipality would be throughout the state of Indiana. As a result of that, Conservancy District is audited every other year by the State Board of Accounts, to the extent that they would look to impose a tax, they're responsible for going through the normal budgetary process, which includes the Department, Local Government, and Finance. And in addition, and I think that this is an important thing for you to keep in mind here, that as part of the Conservancy District and as part of the oversight by the Circuit Court Judge, the Conservancy District is required to hold an annual election, which is, as we've discussed, is based upon a majority vote of the freeholders. It's also required to hold an annual meeting, which is held in either January or February of every year, and to file an annual report with the Circuit Court. That annual report contains all of the meeting minutes from the prior year for the Board of Directors for the Conservancy District, and is also statutorily required to include all of the financial statements for the Conservancy District for the prior year. As a result of that, then the Circuit Court Judge is given the opportunity to review all of those, and to the extent that he has any questions, can require members of the Board of Directors to appear and answer those questions. That's just a small idea of the transparency that's involved in here, and the multiple authorities that have some supervision ability over this Conservancy District. As I indicated to you, this is a watershed solution to a watershed problem. Freeholders are the ones that will represent your Board of Directors, they will be the ones that will be responsible for determining fees and how this Conservancy District will operate. As it currently stands, given the lack of a permanent funding mechanism, your other option, to the extent that this process doesn't move forward, is to sit back at this point in time, wait for January to come around until the General Assembly comes back in session, and see what alternatives they come up with at that point. At this point, there's been at least two alternatives that have been floated out there. One is somewhat similar to what we're proposing here, that fees be assessed based upon property owners. Now, I think that there's a critical distinction between that alternative-
Based on property owners within?
Within a portion of the watershed. That was the proposal that was set forth by the-
Proposal two?
And proposal two was with regards to the casino money, was that basically, that the casino money from the cities of Gary and Hammond and Lake County would be used to basically subsidize the commission and oversight of the commission itself, and oversight of the finalization of the project for the Little Calumet River. And I think that the last thing that I'll close with here is that, in terms of where do we go from here, as everybody and as has been discussed on numerous occasions this evening, basically, we're coming to you, asking you to pass this ordinance to start the process. At a minimum, there are three hearings that are going to be required before this district can even be created. The first hearing solely relates to the petition, concerns whether there's a sufficient number of freeholder signatures, and whether the petition is in statutorily required form. And I think we've discussed this before, but the statutorily required form, you can look at it yourself, it's part of the Indiana Conservancy District Act, which is set forth at IC 14-33, has to set forth the purposes of the district. Under Indiana law, there can be nine specific purposes for a Conservancy District. Here, we're proposing two purposes. That being flood control along the Little Calumet River, and the improvement of drainage within the entire Little Calumet watershed. In addition to the purposes, we have to set forth a number of the Board of Directors, we're proposing nine here, we have to set forth the fact that those Board of Directors will be elected through directorship areas as opposed to an at-large basis. And in addition to those, in addition, and most importantly, we have to set forth the geographical descriptions of the boundaries of the district, which we've done here. After that hearing is held, and after it's been approved and determined that the petition meets the requirements, this matter is then referred to the Department of Natural Resources, who then holds a public hearing. At that public hearing, there is actual evidence that introduced through the testimony of engineers and other experts concerning the feasibility. That's where you really drill down into these issues as to, how is this Conservancy District going to be funded? What are these funds going to be used to do? Things along those lines, basically to ensure that we can prove to the Court and to the Department of Natural Resources that the creation of this district is feasible both from an engineering and economic perspective. And as I indicated, that's a public hearing, there's legal notice that is required to be published for that, the public is permitted to attend and comment to the extent that they would like to do so. At the conclusion of that public hearing, then there is a written report that's prepared by the Department of Natural Resources, giving their recommendation as to whether the Conservancy District should be created. That written report prepared by the Department of Natural Resources is then filed with the Lake County Circuit Court, who then holds the third hearing here, and ultimately determines whether the Conservancy District should be created. That's just kind of a snippet, a short overview of where we would be headed from, assuming you move forward with the adoption of this ordinance and the other municipalities in Lake County do so, that's where we're headed with all of this. That's, in kind of a nutshell, how I wanted to wrap up with you this evening. To the extent you have any additional questions, I'm here, I'm more than willing to answer them for you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, Councilman Markovich has a question for you.
I've got a couple of questions. You know, they talked about this thing that we gave here, IC 14-13-2, Little Cal River Basin Commission, how it was set up. And 14-13-2-6, jurisdiction of the commission may operate in a manner provided in this chapter only in the geographic area within and extending one mile from the bank of the west arm of the Little Cal River and Burns Waterway and so forth. My question to you is, can the River Commission, the Little Cal River Commission, be set up that the proposed boundaries that the Calumet Burns District is going to set up, in other words, increase it more than the one mile? In other words, you know, you have all these other different cities and towns and going into Porter County, could state statute be used to change and make the River Commission's boundaries and, how you want to say, assessing a user fee to all those different counties and towns that you're proposing in the Burns District?
Councilman Markovich, if I'm hearing your question correctly, you're asking whether the General Assembly could amend the commission's statute to basically expand its geographical boundaries? I would believe they would have the ability to do so.
Okay. You know, the State General Assembly was the one that wanted to set the fee at the $25, and then, you know, our mayor and so forth went down there, didn't like it because it was a fee and tax and considered a tax and so forth. When they won that battle, it created another battle, and that's when solid, I says, well, we'll take your riverboat money. Well, then, nobody really wanted to hear that. And I guess to make all cooler heads prevail, nothing happened. There was no fee imposed or anything to that nature. So, you know, you're talking about this Burns District, you know, you're talking, it's going to be a tax. Because, you know, this council's going to vote for it, and it's going to be a tax. And we're not going to have any control of that later on. And if they want to increase it, they're going to increase it. Now, my question, another question is, since we've got an election coming up, can this be put on the election ballot as a referendum and let everybody that's considered in that district who it would affect, let them vote on it, and whether they want it or not?
The General Assembly would have to-
No, 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 no. Well, I'm just, let him answer that.
As it currently stands, I don't believe that the Conservancy District Act in its current form would permit it to be placed on as a referendum.
No.
I think it would involve, I mean, that that act would have to be amended in order to permit that process.
Why cannot that be put on the ballot for the fall election and let the people who would be affected by this vote in favor or against?
Well, I am by no means an election law specialist, but it's my understanding that a referendum can only be held for specific purposes, and my understanding is that those purposes do not include the creation of a proposed Conservancy District.
Well, how about as far as imposing a fee? They did that in Crown Point and so forth when they went to the people in Lake Central in their school districts, whether they do or they don't want their taxes raised to go ahead and support more schools. Why couldn't that be put on the referendum ballot for this election coming? Do you, being in this, the Burns so-called district, do you are in favor of a $50 or $100, $150, $200 fee? Yes or no?
Again, my question, my answer to your question would be, it's my understanding that a referendum can only be held for specific purposes. One of those purposes includes capital improvements for schools. I don't believe those purposes would include whether the proposed Conservancy District should be created, or whether that Conservancy District should impose a fee.
Okay, not knowing how the vote's going to go tonight, whether this thing gets passed, can you check into that for us, in case we do have a delay here and we go another two weeks and we have a work session-
Certainly.
-that you can get that information? Okay, they talked about, now, it's my understanding that if Hammond passes this thing, that's all the votes that's needed to take it to Judge Paris. All the other districts or cities and towns, I guess there's nine other cities and towns that would be involved in this. If we were to pass this tonight, that can go to Judge Paris just on the sole premise of Hammond passing this, is that correct?
You are correct in stating that. That we would have at that point, we would have the statutorily required 5% of freeholder signatures to start the process. Now, as Mr. Van Til's indicated, that's not his intention, but technically speaking, under Indiana law, you are correct in stating that.
Expand or expound a little bit more on what is considered a freeholder?
A property owner.
Okay.
A tenant would not be a freeholder. I mean, it is the strict meaning of fee simple ownership, a property owner.
So you're saying that anybody that wants to run for this, one of these board positions, all they have to be is a freeholder?
That's correct.
So, it doesn't get into, like with the Little Cal River Basin, where it says their members have to be, at least three of their members must have a background in construction, project management, flood control. So what we're saying here for these freeholders, all they got to do is own property there in that district, and that makes them qualified to run for that office.
Under the Conservancy District statute, there's basically two requirements you need to be able to meet in order to be able to serve on the Board of Directors. One, you have to be a freeholder. Secondly, there's a second requirement that basically states that the individual has to be familiar with the Conservancy District and its improvements. It's rather general language. As part of our proposal, what we're proposing is that there be additional requirements in somewhat similar to the commission's requirements in order for individuals to serve on the Board of Directors. So they basically up the requirements or the criteria for somebody to serve on the board.
But what would be those additional requirements to serve on that board? You're saying, you know, a general thing, I mean, is it going to be that they have to be an engineer, or do they have to be a construction guy?
Like I said, it's general language, there hasn't been any case law specifically defining what that means. I mean, basically, the individual has to be familiar with the Conservancy District, its active improvements and its boundaries, as it currently stands. But again, as I indicated, we're looking to impose additional criteria on top of that.
Well, you know, it keeps getting back to this, elected officials are going to be on this board, and they're going to be held accountable, because if they want to get, you know, reelected or whatever and all that. You know, I can go back and bring our own case in point here within the city of Hammond, where, you know, we have a port authority here, and the mayor has three appointments, and the city council has two. And in the past, until the last couple of years, it's always been two elected officials appointed by this council to be on the port authority, which in turn, they would be accountable for anything that's going on at that marina or the Port Authority District now. I can totally agree with that as an elected official, with some qualifications added to that. But right now, our port authority has a boxer on- But right now, our port authority has a boxer on there, a grade school teacher whose qualifications was that he took walks by the marina, a bartender, a bookkeeper, and we have one architectural guy on there. And that's the composes our port authority. And they're in charge of thirty-three million dollars, and they don't behold to anybody. And that's the point, you know, you want elected officials, but here in our own backyard, that's what we put on there, non-qualified personnel. And then, I'm the one that has to deal with it living in Robertsdale because now we've got flooding over there at Wolf Lake and the Little League Field. When we get a rain, that parking lot by that new field is seventy percent underwater, but yet nobody can address it. And yeah, it's another form of government, you know, but they're trying to straighten out, and it's not happening that way.
Well, and quite honestly, I understand your point on that issue, and I think that underlies the fact of why it's important to put these additional criteria in place to make sure that these individuals that serve on the Board of Directors of the conservancy district are qualified.
A couple of weeks ago, they had this Little Cal River Basin Festival. And I know myself and Kim Poland, we took canoe or boat rides and went down there. That was probably the most enlightening thing to see. If you don't see it by firsthand, that's how you're going to be able to see what's going on. And I would suggest that if, again, if this does not pass tonight, that within the next two weeks, or even if it goes four weeks, that everybody sitting on this council, that hopefully somebody can make arrangements, that we all take a boat tour and go see what... You know, we talked about the Army Corps of Engineers, and, you know, the question that keeps coming up, why in the hell didn't we not cut all the trees when they were doing all this work in there now, and then we get a thirty-inch log falling down in there? Why in the hell didn't they cut all those trees down at that time? Can you answer that?
I can't answer that.
I mean, if somebody really wants to see something, you go down that Little Cal River, the most, how you want to say, unbelievable engineering feat that you will see when you go down there is, with all this money we spent for the Army Corps of Engineers and all these engineers, you go down there and you look in this one little way, and there is a dam created by beavers that stopped all the water. It's unbelievable, and that's something this council should see. Because with all the money we spent, millions of dollars, thirty years, beavers have stopped everything there. And we didn't cut all the trees down, and they're cutting more trees down, and they're falling into the river. But yet, nobody can handle that. But these little guys with these paddles have made human beings look like a bunch of fools. I know they talked about, you say right now there's no money available, but I believe the river basin still may have money, I guess four point three million dollars or four million dollars, I mean, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, that that money is still there. I mean, I guess that's an old operating and maintenance fee that could be used in that respect.
That's correct. It would be our hope that that would be used to complete the project so that it could be certified, and at that point in time, the conservancy district would step in and take over ongoing maintenance moving forward.
One of the, see, here, another question that I have is, we're expected to vote on this tonight, and we don't have all the information, and like a lot of people said, two weeks from now we'll have information, and we'll still need more information whether we can make, you know, an intelligent decision. The thing that bothers me is, why aren't we getting the same information that Judge Paris is going to get to make his decision? We're expected to make a decision tonight with nothing, but yet, they're going to give him everything, and he's going to make that decision. Before this even goes to Judge Paris, I would have thought that all of you guys would have put all of this stuff together, that you're going to give Judge Paris and present that to us here, as well as all these other, eight or nine other cities and towns. That's the way I would like to see it done. Because why should we be left with all the information, and then they're going to give everything to the judge?
Well, quite honestly, I think we did give you quite a bit of information in the pamphlets that were prepared by Mr. Van Til's office. That in large part is the information that will be presented to the Circuit Court Judge and to DNR as part of their review of the petition to create the conservancy district.
Okay, a comment was made by Mr. Van Til, that he will not go to the judge unless with just Hammond alone. Now, it's my understanding Hammond alone can go there if we pass this thing tonight. What I would like to see, that in our ordinance, if it should get passed, let's say there's nine, there's nine commission members, is that fair to say, nine cities and towns that's going to be represented?
I think it's quite a few more than that, but it's at least nine, sure.
But I think Gary may have two votes or something, or two appointees?
That's correct, and Porter County...
But do you know how many cities and towns will be, or eligible to vote on this thing?
I do not, but that should be spelled out as part of those packets that indicate the directorship areas and basically where dire, what directorship area they would vote in, that brings all of that down.
What I'm getting at is, and just feeling the vibes, and again, I don't know if this thing's passing tonight, but let's just say it passes five to four. That I would, I would make an amendment in our ordinance, that if this, if ours passes five to four, that that thing cannot be presented to the judge unless there's a majority of all the other cities and towns approving that before it goes to the judge. And I think that would only be the fairest way to do it. That one town, meaning, or city, meaning the city of Hammond, is the only one that can push this and ramrod this thing through, whereas if there's...
Councilman, at any point, you can amend and anything you like into the ordinance.
Well, I understand that.
So if you have questions for him, let's address the questions and be done with it. Because if, that's your authority, you have the authority to do that.
Well, all I'm bringing to light is...
You sit down, young man.
What I'm getting at is, why should Hammond be the only one that can pass this whole thing? But if there's nine cities and towns involved, then, you know, unless nine, unless five out of them nine cities and towns, a simple majority is not there, then that cannot go to the judge.
Well, I mean, I think you raise a good point. As it currently stands under the conservancy district statute, there's a very low threshold, it's that five percent. That's the number we need to hit just to be able to start the process. Now, Mr. Van Til and I, and Mr. Burke and others have committed to go to a number of different municipalities and present them with the same option to pass this ordinance so that they can be involved, they can ask the same questions you are, and determine whether they want to proceed so that we're clearly doing above and beyond that five percent. I know we'll be in New Chicago later this week, and I believe Lake Station as well. So obviously, it's our intention to do above and beyond what's required under the conservancy district statute.
The only thing I'm getting at is, if we pass this tonight, or we're the first ones to move forward on this, it takes away any and all of the bargaining power of any of those other cities and towns. Because they're going to say, you guys are wasting your time coming here to talk to us. You already got your vote, you can go ahead and do it. I would rather see you guys get the commitment or non-commitment from the other nine cities and towns, and whatever that is, then come to Hammond. Don't let Hammond be...
Please, please, please.
Don't let Hammond be, how you want to say, the trendsetter, especially if it's going to go with a five to four vote. That I would rather see, if there, like I said, if there's nine other cities and towns, and it comes back to Hammond and it's four to four, then fine, we'll make the final decision on it. But don't put us, you know, on the pedestal and set the trend because they're all going to say, hey, what's the use? They got the votes, they're going to do it regardless. And I don't think that's fair to the rest of them other cities and towns. And I've been trying to, you know, make contact with Munster and a few of the other ones, but, you know, it's not returning phone calls. And I don't like, you know, putting the ball in my court, or our court here, to be the first ones, but you can't even get responded to phone calls from any other cities and towns. And I think that puts us at an unfair disadvantage. And again, if we're the first ones to vote on it, we're taking away their freedom of speech and all those other people, you know, to do what, at least what we did here, was a partial public hearing. Now, whether we're set up another public hearing, again, not knowing how the votes are going tonight, this may be the public hearing, and it's done and over with. But again, I'm only one vote, and I can't, you know, account for how everybody else is going to go. But, you know, that's just some suggestions that I have, and questions that I have, and, you know, I don't know what's going to happen. Thank you.
I need a motion to refer back to the regular order of business. I get a motion?
Make a motion.
The motion by Councilman Hoesier, second by Councilwoman Pollard, would be...
Right back to the regular order of business. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passed. Now, back to ordinance eleven twenty-one A. Eleven twenty-one A.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
I know it would be easy to say, make a motion to table, but that, I don't think that's what we're looking for. But, you know, a motion could be made to send it back to the council as a whole with the understanding that, you know, within the next couple of weeks, or month, or whatever, that we have a study session, and I guess to make it legal, have a legal public hearing and set that either for the next council meeting or one month from tonight, I so move.
Second.
Two motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Hoesier, that we refer this back to council as a whole, eleven dash twenty-one, with a public hearing scheduled for our next council meeting, which would be...
June twenty-seventh.
June twenty-seventh. Is there any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote on the motion.
Markovich?
Yes.
Pasalic?
No.
Spitali?
No.
Kalwinski?
Yes.
Salinas?
No.
Poland?
Yes.
Opinkar?
No.
Henosa?
Yes.
Higgs?
No. I lost my list, so what is the vote?
Four yeses, five no, President Higgs.
Motion fails. Motion fails to refer back. I lost my list, hold on one second. I lost my list, hold on one second. I need my list of yes and no, so late at night. Yeah, can I have one? Now, I need to, I need to re-go through this vote again because I really displaced my list. Forgive me.
Mr. Chairman?
Excuse me?
Can you, can you just go through roll call attendance again for us?
I will. We will revert back to the original motion. The motion was to revert this back to council as a whole, and with a public hearing scheduled for June twenty-seventh, twenty-eleven, okay? Now, we're going to have a recall of the, recall of the vote. A yes vote would be to refer it back, a no vote would be to not to refer it back to council. Okay?
What?
A yes vote would be to refer it back to council as a whole, with a public hearing scheduled on June twenty-seventh. A no vote would be a no vote to vote in favor of referring it back to council as a whole. Okay? All minds and hearts are clear? I'm woke now, let's go. Roll call vote.
Markovich, yes. Pasalic?
No.
Spitali?
No.
Kalwinski?
Yes.
Salinas?
No.
Poland?
Yes.
Opinkar?
No.
Henosa?
Yes.
Higgs?
Yes, refer back. Motion passes, yes. Five yeses, four no.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Seeing how we have two weeks and a public hearing, I would request that Little Cal River Basin personnel, the law firm of whoever and whatever, Hollenbeck, and the surveyor's office approach and set something up with this council for any, any of those that would want to go and take a trip on this river to see exactly what we're looking at, that they work together in conjunction with this, so that all council members would have the opportunity to get on that river and see what's going. It would probably be the best time to go now, after we had all this extra water and everything, because it probably might have brought in a lot more debris into the river
Certainly, any of the colleagues that wish to do so may do so at that time. Number ten on the agenda is a resolution. Clerk Golub.
One moment.
Resolution.
Right, one moment.
Number eight is a resolution confirming the appointment of Laura Carrow as a commissioner to the Hammond Historical Preservation Commission of the City of Hammond, Indiana, sponsored by Mark Kalwinski.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, you may, clerk. I just read it because you were looking for it.
Resolution eleven R dash zero-eight sponsored by Councilman Kalwinski. A resolution confirming the appointment of Laura Carrow as the commissioner of the Hammond Historic Preservation Commission of the City of Hammond, Indiana.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kalwinski.
Move for final passage for eleven R dash eight.
Second.
It's been motion by Councilman Kalwinski, second by Councilwoman Pasalic, that we move eleven R eight, third and final reading resolution. Any discussion to the resolution?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Kalwinski.
I was approached by Brian Pollan, the city planner, who is on the Historical Preservation Committee with this name. This person is from my district and eager to serve, and has an interest in these kinds of things, and so I'm supporting that resolution and hope that the rest of the council can as well.
Any other discussion as it relates to the resolution? Any other discussion? Any discussion? Roll call vote on eleven R eight.
Markovich?
Yes.
Pasalic?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Kalwinski?
Yes.
Salinas? Poland?
Yes.
Opinkar?
Yes.
Henosa?
Yes.
Higgs?
Yes, motion passes, eight in favor and one absent. Number eleven is new and unfinished business on the agenda this evening. New and unfinished business.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have a letter sent to Regional Data Services, one-two-six-zero, Arrow Head Court, Crown Point, Indiana, four-six-three-oh-seven, phone number two-one-nine-six-six-one-dash-three-two-zero-zero. Requesting a copy of their contract with the city of Hammond to provide data processing services and to have one of their representatives appear at the next city council meeting, I so move.
Second.
Two motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilwoman Pollard, to send a letter to, what's her name?
Regional Data Services.
Regional Data Services. Is there any discussion on the letter? Any discussion on the letter? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes. I'd like a letter sent to code enforcement to inspect nine thirty-six Field Street as it relates to see if that house is feasible. Been having a lot of concerns and questions from residents over there, so nine thirty-six, I so move.
Second.
It's been motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilwoman Pollard, that we send a letter to code enforcement to inspect property on nine thirty-six Field. Any discussion on the letter? Any discussion on the letter? Any discussion on the letter? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes. I'd like to send a letter to the Hammond Police Department as it relates to some shooting that took place last week in the park, just to make sure that the police people control the area and clear the park. I would need to be, as it relates to any incidents that may occur in the park, can allow people to be shooting in other, in the residents' homes, so that must be addressed, and I so move.
Second.
It's been motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilwoman Pollard, that we send a letter to the Hammond Police Department as it relates to the shooting at Maywood Park. Any discussion on the letter? Any discussion on the letter? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes. New and unfinished business, new and unfinished business. Is there any other new and unfinished business? On June twenty-fifth, there will be a three-on-three basketball tournament held at MLK Park, starts at eight a.m. Any children interested in being a part of that, feel free to contact me, our Leroy